We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I guess first, we need to go ahead and welcome our newest commissioner. We've had new commissioners every week, every two weeks lately, but welcome Commissioner Bischoff. And you'll be representing Mayor Berry. And we're delighted to have you join us. All right, Commissioners, our first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. And we have an updated agenda at our desk. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is the approval of the October 26, 2017 minutes, which we received.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, motion to approve? All in favor? Okay. The next is the recognition of council members. And I have not seen who has come in. Which council members do we have here?
Yeah, Brenda.
Council Lady, would you like to come up and speak now or with your item later this afternoon?
Later.
Okay. Yes, Council Lady Van Reese?
Hello. Happy Autumn. I, once again, am pleased to be here about an item on consent, but I just wanted to explain it. There is a name change coming before you on the consent agenda for Old Du-West Avenue to Bayshaw Avenue. There has been some work by Public Works in regard to the USD change in regard to East-Du-West, West-Du-West, Du-West-North. There's also an Old-Du-West. And so, obviously, to avoid some confusion for 911, et cetera, I think changing this name is a benefit, and that's listed on the application. However, I wanted to kind of explain why Bayshaw. Because what does that mean, right? They, first of all, I wanted to let you know that in addition to Public Works indicating a desire to avoid 911 confusion, here are some reasons for the name change. On Old-Du-West, there is a historic grave site named for the Bayshaw family. They had property there dating back to the 1800s. In fact, the Metro Historic Commission did the research on this and verified that Mr. Bayshaw was a Revolutionary War veteran. We were able to find some descendants in Virginia, and they are aware of the pending activity in this area. The state of Tennessee has confirmed that the old landfill next to the grave site, if you can imagine. Yeah, right? Okay. The old landfill next to the grave site has been cleared for, hang on one second, for the -- for approved surface use. You know, when you have an old landfill, in fact, even the building of the hospital, Skyline Hospital, helped us actually cap the landfill, because you had dirt, you had rock, you had dirt again. The state of Tennessee has confirmed that the old landfill next to the grave has been approved for surface use. The city has been in the process of three projects that are separate and yet concurrent activity that has been planned there. Number one, HCA will be extending a parking lot use and clearing up an entrance to their property from the Old-Du-West side. Indeed, they're going to be moving their emergency room entrance to this new side of the building when it's being expanded. Number two, NES will be installing a solar panel farm that will be facing the highway on much of the old landfill site. Number three, the HCA Foundation and Metro Parks, as well as NES, are working with me, the Historic Commission, Metro Parks, and the mayor's office, to approve a new park that would be on the property that will allow tree plantings, what you can't do in a landfill. The park will have a walking path, some exercise equipment along the path, and historical markers that emphasizes how the Bayshaw family used the land to sustain themselves and how solar panels are also helping sustain our modern world. There will be local school bus tours to this location, and it will be a statewide destination point for anyone interested in solar energy. Each of these activities will have an opportunity for public input in the coming months. The park, if approved, will be called Bayshaw Park. It's because of this that the name change to Bayshaw Avenue makes sense, and I appreciate your approval. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Council Lady Dowell, do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait until your item?
I'll go ahead and speak now, because I have another meeting this evening. But I am speaking on 2017-270. And it was on the consent agenda. I really don't know why it's even in your committee. The applicant, it says that you're consenting to send this over to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance to establish a car wash on a site, that's a commercial site in our district. And I'm opposed to this, as well as many of our neighbors. We've been working on this for about now a year, going back and forth with this use here. One of the things is that for a car wash to be established, we have a structural requirement. And I'm not sure why the, I don't even know if the Board of Zoning Appeals have the authority to deviate between the structural requirements of the use for this particular business. I don't see where there's a hardship in it, because when we have a car wash, we ask if they're enclosed. And so, I really don't understand that. But just in general, I do not support this request for this variance. I don't really think it's a variance issue. I think it's a use issue. Is can they establish a car wash without meeting the structural requirements that's in our zoning code? And the answer is either have the requirements met or not. One thing I would tell you about this, you know, they say it's mobile, but there's nobody to enforce whether they're there a couple of days a week or not. There's nothing looking at the stormwater. It's a concrete surface, so it doesn't meet any of those stormwater requirements either. In addition to all of that, I want to just say that we established an urban design UDO overlay down Murfreesboro Pike. And one of the main reasons we established that UDO was to address like structural issues, designs, and things like that with businesses on the corridor. Excuse me, on the corridor. And one of the things I'm starting to notice is people trying to get around this overlay by saying that they're mobile, you know, and moving things from one place to the other, and then coming down and trying to get a variance to not comply with our overlay. So, I'm just asking for you to not consent. I don't really know what the recommendation should be from your committee, but I don't really think that it should be approved by you, because they're not complying to the use that we require in the zoning code as far as like what the structure should have for a car wash. And that's, those are my comments on it.
Okay, thank you. Council Lady Johnson, do you want to speak now, or?
Thank you, Vice Chair Farr, Director Sloan, Councilmember Bedney. This is the first meeting I get to see you here. And all of you esteemed Commissioners. I am Karen Johnson, District 29, and I am here to speak on Item 20, which is 2017Z-105PR-001. This is to change property located on Couchville Pike to IWD zoning, which is rare that the entire community would support such a zone change. But again, we have an example here of a developer that came to the community and talked over their plans, and has been in communications with me. And the neighbors overwhelmingly in the Couchville Pike area support this development. As a result, when we get these good developers that work with their councilperson and come to the community, it always works out as a win-win. And so, everybody in this area has embraced this development. They're very excited about this office development that's going up with a little bit of some warehouse activity, but it's done in a way where it is comparable to the surrounding properties and to the residences in the area. One of the conditions that the community did place upon this developer to ensure that this area does not become a problem in terms of traffic and Public Works issues in that area with this tight development going in around residences, is that a light. They are going to be placing a light at Couchville Pike at Stewart's Ferry. So, one of the conditions, I hope and pray, because I haven't looked at what you all have, but one of the conditions that the community expressed to this developer was that they would like for them to place the traffic light at this location. That way, there will not be any traffic concerns in the area. So again, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. Congratulations, Commissioner Moore, when you came before our committee. It's great to see you here. But, you know, it's good to see new people on our commission, so we're very excited as a city and as a community. But thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. And Director Sloan, this is a win-win for Southeast National Antioch, District 29. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that we have missed? Okay. The next item is going to be the list of items for deferral and withdrawal.
Yes, starting with item number one, the items for deferral or withdrawal. Case 2017Z-023TX001 pertaining to sidewalks and religious institutions. Staff recommendation is to defer this text amendment to the December 14 Planning Commission meeting. The next item is Item 5, case 2017S-225-001, the Elder Place subdivision, resubdivision of Lot 1 at 3800 Estes Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 11 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is Item 7, case 2017NHL-001-002. This is a development plan approval for property at 901 Dalebrook Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the December 14 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is Item 11, 2017SP-084-001. This is a request to rezone from R8 to SP zoning for property along West Trinity Lane to permit up to 26 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the December 14 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is Item 12, case 2017SP-094-001, a request to rezone from R40 to SP zoning for property at 6404 Edens Creek Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the December 14 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is Item 14, case 2017S-243-001, the Anderson Estates resubdivision of Lot 4 and Track 14 at 205 Scaff Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the December 14 Planning Commission meeting. And I will note on Item 14 that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Next item is Item 15, case 2017S-254-001, a request for concept plan approval to create 37 single-family lots and nine two-family lots for property at 2133 and 2315B East Hill Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the December 14 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is Item 19, case 2009UD-001-009. This is a request for final site plan approval and modification approval on property located at 2540 Park Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the December 14 Commission meeting. And then Items 25A, 25B, and 25C pertaining to short-term rentals. Case 2017Z-024TX, 2017Z-026TX, and 2017Z-027TX are all being, staff recommendation is to defer to the December 14 Planning Commission for all three items. And those are all of the items on the deferral list.
Thank you, Bob. So just to recap for everybody, we've got Items 1, 5, 7, 11, 12, 14, 15, 19, 25, A, 25B, and 25C are the items on the deferral list.
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve? A second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, our next item is the consent agenda items.
And before I get to the consent agenda items, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following items into the record, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these items removed. Starting with item number four, case 2017SP-079-001, a request to rezone from R8 to SP zoning on property at 5923 Robertson Avenue to permit up to five multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And next item is Item number nine, case 2017M-013SR-001, a request to rename Old-Du-West Avenue to Bayshaw Avenue from Dickerson Pike to Du-West Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is Item 10, case 2016SP-005-003, a request to amend a specific plan by replacing three multifamily units with 4,000 square feet of non-residential space on property located at 1390 and 1400 Adams Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is Item 13, case 2017S-198-001, a request for concept plan approval to create up to 11 cluster lots on a portion of property located at 1213 and 1205 Robinson Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is Item 16, case 177-74P-003, a request for a revision and final site plan approval for a portion of a PUD overlay district at 720, 724, and 728 Ermac Drive to permit a hotel. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is Item 20, case 2017Z-105PR-001. This is a request to rezone from CN and R20 to IWD zoning on property at 2737 Couchville Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item on the consent list is Item 22, case 2017Z-113PR-001. This is a request to rezone from CS to MULA zoning on property at 1102 and 1104 Buchanan Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is Item 23, case 2017Z-115PR-001. This is a request to rezone from IR to MUGA zoning for property at 607, 608, and 616, 25th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on Item number 23. Next item is Item 24, 2017Z-025TX-001, a request for an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Metro Code, the zoning regulations by amending Section 1716.030E regarding multifamily units associated with artisan manufacturing. Staff recommendation is approval. Next item is Item 26. It's to amend the 2017, the 2018 through 2022 to 2023 capital improvement budget, Project 09WS0025, to remove references to the Urban Service District, or USD, and modify the taxing district to the General Service District, GSD. Staff recommendation is to approve, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on Item 26. And the last item is Item 30, accept the director's report and approve administrative items. And I'm being told that Item number 18 can be on the consent as well. Item 18 is Case 95P-025-003. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for a portion of a planned unit development overlay district on property located at 1430 Bell Road to permit 256 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, going back through our consent agenda, Items 4, Items 9, Item 10, Item 13, Item 16, Item 17, Item 18. Got put back on. Not 17, 17 got pulled.
17 got pulled.
Okay, sorry. 17, 20, 22, 23, 24, 26, and 30.
That's correct.
Okay. No, 18 got, 18 got put back on the consent.
Right.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. So, the items that we're going to be hearing tonight are Items 2, 3, 6, 8, 17, and 21?
That's right.
18 got, 18 went back. Okay. So, if you are not here for one of those items, if you quietly leave, and we will go ahead and get started with Item number 2.
Good evening, Commissioners. Justin, I'm presenting Case Number 2. This case is a request for a zoning code variance currently scheduled to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals on November 16. The specific request is to vary from the Metro zoning code requirement that a car wash operate within an enclosed structure on property located at 3501 Murfreesboro Pike. The property is outlined here in red. Staff recommends that the Board of Zoning Appeals makes a determination whether to grant the variance. If the variance is not granted, the building permit will be reviewed against the UDO by planning staff. The property is currently zoned Commercial Services District and located within the Murfreesboro Pike Urban Design Overlay. The current policy is T3 Suburban Community Center. Some background, the applicant submitted an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Metro zoning code, Section 17.40.340.B, states that the Board of Zoning Appeals shall not grant variances within urban design overlay districts without first considering a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The case is currently scheduled to appear on the November 16 BZA meeting agenda. A car wash is defined in the zoning code, as you see on the screen, a building or portion thereof containing facilities for washing more than two automobiles using production-line methods with a chain conveyor, blower, steam cleaning device, or other mechanical devices within an enclosed structure or a self-service facility with one or more wash bays that is free or coin-operated. Car wash also includes operations that are done by hand, such as auto detailing. For commercial services zoning districts, a car wash is a commercial use permitted with conditions. Those conditions include design-based standards with specific provisions addressing auto-oriented uses. The applicant is requesting to vary from Condition Number 3, which states that car washing facilities must operate within an enclosed structure. In terms of process, planning staff would review projects that fall within an urban design overlay district if it is determined by the codes department that a building permit application is required. If the codes department determines that a building permit application is required and the property is located within an urban design overlay district, then the compliance provisions of the overlay would apply, and planning staff would review the project against the development standards. For the Murfreesboro Pike UDO, the development standards include the following: bulk standards such as building setback height and facade width, architectural standards such as building type, glazing materials, and permitted attachments such as balconies; parking and access standards such as the location and number of parking spaces; streetscape standards and compliance with the major and collector street plan; landscape standards such as planting areas around parking and required number of trees; and signage standards. The UDO does not govern uses, nor does it take into account a range of informal activities or incremental structures that may not require a building permit. Provided the codes department does not require a building permit, these structures and activities might include food trucks, booth vendors with limited hours of operation, or temporary events with tent-like structures, for example. In conclusion, staff is recommending that the BZA determine whether to grant the variance. If the variance is not granted, the building permit will be reviewed against the UDO and by planning staff.
Thank you. Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
My name is Nick Bailey, and I represent Mr. Abraham Whitaker, who is the applicant. And just a little bit of background on this.
Can I get, sorry, could I name an address first? I'm sorry, address?
4700 Elkins Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you. This matter was, our request for a variance was filed with the Board of Zoning Appeals. We were set to be on their agenda at the last hearing day they had. Prior to that, the zoning administrator had determined that because we were not asking at this point to build anything on that structure, nor are we asking even the BZA to do that, that there would be no reason to come to planning unless and until the BZA considered it. And then depending on what they did, if our variance was granted and we're able to operate without a permanent structure, the UDA would not, UDO would not be triggered, and we wouldn't even have to come here. That was his position at the time. It was, I think, informally discussed with the staff here and thought to be the correct position. And the reason, the council member said she didn't know why it was on. The reason it was on is because she insisted that it come here. And that's why we got put on this. And I think the staff has the right recommendation on this, because at this point, it's premature to come before this body. I mean, we really, our variance is being requested for this temporary use, which is not, it's not a car wash, it's a car detailing business that uses the tents that Mr. Wallace was talking about. There's not even any sewer service on this property. It's vacant land. He's, you know, not going to build a car wash. That's not his business model. So I would submit to this board that at this particular time, the staff recommendation should be accepted, because it's really, it's premature to really even come before this board until we go before the BZA next week. And this is Mr. Abraham Whitaker, and give him your address, I guess. He's the applicant.
Okay.
753 Dover Glen Drive, Antioch, Tennessee.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. Well, you will have two minutes for rebuttal. Do we have anyone here speaking in favor of this item? Anyone speaking in opposition? Would you please come up, and you'll have two minutes, and please state your name and
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is David Chilton at 1416 Forest Away, Antioch, Tennessee. I am the Metro Beautification Project Manager, Commissioner for District 33. This particular site is right across the street from the border of the district that I represent. There's already some existing development on that intersection there. There's been a development, a public center, Goodwill store, which is very attractive and meets the standards of the overlay that had been in place by the city. It's very nice and attractive. And this overlay, which was And this overlay, which was done several years ago, it's put in place to ensure a high standard of building and businesses that go into our area. This is a very promising area. I know the owner would like to see a, this car wash go in there. Already on this property are concrete pads, aluminum carport, there are portable food wagons out there, and there are tents that are set up. And there's also a porta potty that is out there all the time. I was under the impression a porta potty is supposed to be temporary. I was a little taken aback when I heard the comment that that is not really a car wash. My observation is that it is a car wash. In fact, two weeks ago, I drove by and asked him how much for a car wash, and I was quoted $30. So, what does that mean?
Your time is up.
Totally.
Your time is up.
I mean, ten seconds?
You can finish your sentence.
Concern about the stormwater concerns the building and the overlay violation. I'd ask that it be enforced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else speaking in opposition? If the applicant would like to come back up and use your two minutes for rebuttal?
I would just say briefly, there, as I said, there is no sewer service on the property. The car detailing, not the car wash, the car detailing that Mr. Whitaker does has a water reclamation system, so there's no runoff. He captures the water that he uses. The porta potty that he's talking about must be associated with the temporary food truck, which is not Mr. Whitaker.
Okay.
That's really the only thing I'd add.
Okay, thank you. Council Lady Dowell, do you want to come back up?
I just want to clarify something. He said he didn't know why he's here. I think it should be here because I think, going back and forth to the zoning appeals, the reason why I think it should be here is because this is a car wash. It's not a mobile car wash. There's nobody to enforce how many days they're out there operating. They said three days. Well, they're out there more than three days. And they, and this is also a mobile, food mobile operation, too. I don't know if they told you this. It is food truck plus the car wash. There has been no traffic type mediation on this lot. They do have water runoff because that was one of my concerns because it's not a permeated surface, so the water is running off. There are no, if you look at this lot, the water settles there because there's no ditches there, so that is a concern of mine. I actually spoke with them, and I told them, I said, "If you want to operate this, let's get you legal." And I want to put this in context real quickly. It's that the reason why we established the overlay is because we wanted the design standards, and we wanted to have some type of control and structure on these uses. Because what we see now is up and down that road, a whole bunch of people just setting up anywhere and not complying to our overlay since he set up. It is true. They, and I tried to stop them in the beginning. They paved it, cars are backed up on Mount View Circle coming out on Murphysboro Pike. That needs to be looked at. It's not like you're having one car come in there and leave. This is a, essentially, it's a car wash, and it is a full-time operation between having the food truck there and the car wash. And it's not what we establish in the overlay as far as that goes. And the variance is asking you, asking for us to exclude him from complying to the car wash code. And the car wash code says that if you're going to operate a car wash, then you have to meet certain standards, and it has to be enclosed. And then we do have stormwater standards, so I think this business does not comply with the use, and that's why, and it, there's, if he's not planning to enclose it and construct a car wash, then we don't need to go to ask for a variance because what we're basically doing is asking the BZA is to disregard the zoning code and make a determination on the use of a piece of property. And that's what I don't agree to. I think that this property is not compliant. The BZA should not be given a recommendation per se, a variance. I mean, I'm certain that they would agree with me that no variance is needed because the code says that the use for a car wash requires an enclosed structure. So, that is the reason why. I think really zoning can make a determination that this does not comply with the use, and we can be done from there. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and this is kind of a complicated. Director Simms, would you like to give a little bit of background, just to kind of go back over what we heard?
Yeah, so, we don't control use, especially on a property that is, has a, is already zoned. It's not an SP where we would speak to that. It is in a UDO, though. And when someone seeks a variance in a UDO, the BZA asks for a recommendation from the planning department, the Planning Commission. And we usually handle those administratively. That's generally how that moves forward. But what we can't do is speak to what uses are permitted or to really even comment on appropriate uses on a property. That's the zoning administrator, and the BZA under certain circumstances could speak to that as well. But that's just not something we control. And what we've said in our recommendation is, if they don't build a structure, then there's really nothing for us to review against the UDO. If the BZA were to give them that variance, and if the BZA doesn't give them that variance, then they've got to meet the UDO. But until we see something that's proposed, assuming that the BZA tells them they cannot get a variance and tells them they have to build a structure, at that time, when plans are drawn up for those structures and submitted to us, then we would review them to make sure that they meet the UDO standards. But we don't, at this time, have anything to review, other than to say just that to the BZA in our recommendation.
Wouldn't it been better to defer it after BZA then, or?
Well, we still have to give a recommendation. It's just very unusual that someone would go, that would submit a request for a variance without any structure at all. That's just not something we normally see. So normally, we would have something that we were reviewing that we would give comments on. We just don't have it here. And all we've been able to say then is, if they give the variance and there's no structure, then there's nothing for us to review it against. If they don't, then we'll need to see a set of plans, and we'll review that against the UDO when we get it. And that's our recommendation. And so what we're looking for is either a, the commission to agree or disagree with that recommendation.
Well, I agree. I do want to ask about the structure that is there, though? The carport, I guess it is? Was that always there, or?
Well, I'm not sure about that. But to that point, so, that's why we have Property Standards Division in the Codes Department. And if someone's using their property improperly, if they have a structure on the property that's not permitted, then that's who should cite them, bring them, give them an opportunity, give them a notice of violation, is the way that happens. They send them a letter saying, "Hey, you're in violation." Usually, they do that first. They, if they fail to remedy whatever the problem is, then they will cite them into environmental court, and then they have a hearing in front of the environmental law judge. Then they're given, well, maybe or maybe not, depending on how the judge feels that day, the opportunity to remedy it. But that's still not something the planning department would review.
Well, my, I agree with staff recommendation. I think that's the proper way to go to the BZA first.
Okay. Commissioner Sims?
I agree with the staff recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Bischoff?
I have to agree with the staff recommendation. It's too complicated. It's got to be the right thing.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ben Padde?
Yeah, I don't agree with the staff recommendation. And the reason is, I used to be on the BZA, and so this doesn't sound right at a, you know, what I remember about what we did at the BZA. But I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
What did they apply for when they went to pull the permit?
You're asking what the permit is that they applied for? Is a car wash, to operate a car wash?
But they say that it's not a car wash, that it's a car detail.
Right. I don't have the permit in front of me, but the permit was for a car wash, and then they filed an application to the BZA to request a variance to one of the conditions of a car wash use.
Okay, that's an important question. Is, did they apply for a car detail or for a car wash?
I can't speak specifically to what's on the building permit itself.
The application that we're reviewing, what does that application say they're filing a request for?
The application to the BZA?
Yes.
Is specifically to request a variance to a car wash condition, that it be enclosed in a structure.
So they are saying it's a car wash, and they want an exception to that car wash requirement that it be not enclosed?
That is correct. We're not reviewing the building permit application. We're reviewing the BZA applicant.
Okay. Because they say here that they were applying for a car detail place, but they applied for a car wash?
Car wash is the use in the zoning code, and so it's the closest thing to what they want to operate on that property as determined by the zoning administrator.
Right. But they say here they were not doing a car wash.
It's the closest thing that they, that's listed as a use.
It's irrelevant. What did they, because that's an important distinction.
Their use, they're getting a use permit for a car wash because the zoning administrator determined that that's what their use would be in the zoning code.
All right. Is a car wash, a car wash is permitted on a CS zoning, right?
A car wash is permitted in CS zoning with conditions, yes.
How about a car detail? Is it permitted on a CS zoning?
The zoning administrator, it's, there's some uses that aren't in the zoning code, and so the zoning administrator has to determine what the closest use in the code is to what they're asking to do. So they're asking to do a car detailing use, and so he determined that that falls under car wash use in the zoning code. And then that's a permitted with conditions use in the code, and that's, that's how they determine the use. I mean, they, there's a lot of times where people will come in with uses that aren't specifically in the code, so the zoning administrator has to classify them as per something that is in the code.
Can you put that slide back up that defines the car wash? Doesn't it say car wash includes operations done by hand, such as auto detailing?
And that's a fantastic question for the zoning administrator. But that's not something the planning department does. We don't make those determinations. That is the exclusive purview of the zoning administrator. And if someone disagrees with the analysis that the zoning administrator's done and thinks that it is, in fact, a car wash, and that is the analysis that's being done, actually, and I think he's saying it is a car wash, I don't think that he's not saying it's a car wash, the zoning administrator. But if someone disagreed with the zoning administrator's opinion on that, then they can do what's called an item A appeal to the BZA and challenge the zoning administrator's interpretation.
Yeah, but how would the BZA use the hardship definition to decide?
Again, that would be the BZA's purview. I think we are well into a discussion of things that are not within the purview of the Planning Commission or the planning department, but the BZA and the zoning administrator. And that's really what we were trying to say in our recommendation is, we don't have anything to review yet. When you have a structure and you want to build something, then, then we engage, and we will compare it to the UDO.
And if they don't get the variance?
And if they fail to get the variance, they will either have to stop operations, I suspect. Now, this is, again, up to the BZA, but they would probably have to stop operations if they don't get the variance. Or they'll have to come in with a plan to build a structure, at which time then we would review it.
Yeah, I just, sorry, do I get to speak, continue to speak?
Yes, you may speak.
I'm new here, so sorry. So, why did they want to pull a permit?
That I'm not sure of. If I had to guess, they probably got cited.
But if they don't need a permit, why did they even bother to go pull? I mean, if I wanted to raise goats on that property, do I need a permit?
Well, yes. Well...
If I don't build anything.
No, no, you couldn't get a permit to raise goats in CS.
Let's assume it's, it's a rural zoning, and I wanted to raise goats, and I don't build anything, so I wouldn't need to...
If your zoning allowed the use that you wanted to do, and that that use didn't require an enclosure, then yes, you could go do that. But the code says, at least my reading of it, says that it requires an enclosure. And so what I believe the applicant's trying to do is to say, "We want to do this activity there, but we don't think we need an enclosure, and we would like the BZA to give us that variance." Now, I don't necessarily disagree with your analysis about whether or not this meets the required hardship criteria that's set out in the state statute to get that variance or not, but that is a decision for the BZA to make, not for us.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm not convinced, although I'm going to go, no, but I appreciate the answers.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackshear, I'll let you go next.
I agree with the staff's recommendation that this be heard before the BZA.
Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, I think it's tough, but I also agree with their recommendation.
Okay. So we need a motion to...
I'm making a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we have one opposed. Okay, thank you. Next item is going to be item number three.
This is a request to permit up to 15 multifamily residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site is located at 1699 1701, 1703, and 1705 Lishy Avenue, at the northeast corner of Lishy Avenue and Marshall Street. The site is currently zoned RS5, which is, requires a minimum 5,000 square foot lot and is intended for single-family dwellings. As you are familiar, this image shows the growth and preservation map, which was adopted by the Planning Commission as a part of Nashville Next. The growth and preservation map identifies areas which are the most appropriate for growth to occur. This map indicates the location of the site relative to the transition areas, Tier One and Tier Two centers. This site is identified by the orange dot on the screen. The site is located approximately four miles from downtown, less than half a mile from the Dickerson Pike Corridor, which is designated as a Tier Two center, and 675 feet south of the corridor along Trinity Lane designated as a transition area. This map illustrates the surrounding network of arterial and collector streets along the grid pattern of surrounding local streets. This site fronts a residential corridor, Lishy Avenue. Marshall Street, shown here along the southern portion of the site, is currently unbuilt. But as you can see, if constructed, it would begin to reconnect the network of local streets in this area, which is supported by the policy. Lishy Avenue, which is the purple line in the middle of the screen, contains existing MTA service, along with an MTA stop directly fronting this site. Existing sidewalks along both sides of Lishy Avenue provide a path for pedestrian travel from the site to the corridor along Trinity Lane to the north. Publicly accessible open space is located at Tom Joy Park, approximately 1,220 feet to the northeast of the site, identified here as the Green Square. The policy for this area was changed from T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance to T4 Urban Neighborhood Evolving at the January 12, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Five community meetings were held to engage and inform the public about the policy change. And as you can see, the meetings occurred from October 10, 2016 through November 9, 2016. A total of five meetings were held. Staff hosted a community open house with maps of proposed policy changes on November 9, 2016, and maps of the proposed policies. Policy changes were also posted to planning department's website on November 10, 2016. On September 21, the applicant stated that they met with the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association to discuss the project, and they stated that approximately 40, give or take, people were in attendance. in attendance. The policy for this site is T4 urban neighborhood evolving. T4 urban neighborhood evolving is intended to create and enhance urban residential neighborhoods that provide more housing choices, improve connectivity, and moderate to high-density development patterns with shallow setbacks and minimal spacing between buildings. The proposed SP is consistent with the policy, which is intended to enhance urban neighborhoods with a variety of housing choices and high levels of connectivity. The site plan consists of four lots on approximately .87 acres. The SP proposes up to 15 multifamily residential units for the site. Five of the proposed units will front Lishy Avenue, and four units will front Marshall Street to the south. The six remaining units will front onto interior open space. Marshall Street, located at the southern portion of the site, will be constructed as part of this development. The plan limits the total, the maximum height, to two and a half stories and 36 feet. The maximum height for the three units oriented toward the open space adjacent to the eastern property line will be limited to a maximum of two stories and 30 feet. The site plan also proposes a 15-foot wide landscape buffer along the north and east property lines. This buffer will be located between the proposed units along the northern property line and the units fronting Marshall Street. This SP achieves two critical planning goals. It creates an opportunity for urban development that fills in gaps in areas served by existing infrastructure. The proposed dwellings will provide additional housing choice for the residents in the area. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve the conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Please come forward and state your name and address. You'll have 10 minutes, and can hold two back for rebuttal.
Thank you. Do I have to turn? Here we go. Good afternoon, commissioners, councilmen. I want to thank you for your time today and your service to this commission. I want to first of all thank the staff. Excuse me. I'm Scott Morton, Smith G. Studio, 1005 North 14th Street. I am, work for Smith G. Studio. We're the local architecture and urban planning firm that is the consultant for this property and the applicant that's here today. We want to really thank staff for their key input during our planning effort, really understanding the policy that was in place and working with the staff to generate a plan that worked within the policy and met the policy goals that were adopted by this commission earlier this year. We feel that through that dialogue, we were able to get a really good site plan that really will provide value to the community. As far as our process, beyond engaging the staff early, we also met with the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association. They have a two-step process in their development, reviewing development projects. One is they have a development review committee that you have to meet with first, and we met with that committee and the members of that committee against the design guidelines that they have put into place for, to judge projects against. And they agree with us that our proposal met several of the critical design guidelines that were in place from that committee, including introducing density along a major corridor, introducing an evolving and broader range of housing types to meet different housing needs, and improving mobility options of walking, biking, transit access, and driving options. It ensured continued affordability for residents as well by providing a smaller square footage home and a smaller price point that would serve the workforce housing within the community. Regarding policy, I won't get too much back into what staff said, but we talked a lot about policy and how to come up with a plan on this corridor where existing transit services, and to provide an option that would create value along this corridor, but would also be in context with the local community. And so, working with staff and working with the community based on their input, we looked at transitions and scale. We looked at the type of units. These are single-family detached units, small cottage units where architecturally we want to take cues off the surrounding development so that it fits in within the community, along the Lishy Major Corridor, as well as along Marshall Street to the south, which is the new improved right-of-way that we'll be building as part of this application. The, excuse me, all right, good. Plan supports diversity of housing. Again, the smaller footprints allow us to create a price point that we think will create something that's not currently available in the marketplace, and we think that's a really good thing, especially in this very hot urban market, infill market. And lastly, we met with the larger community group as well at Highland Heights following week after meeting with the development committee, and we had generally a good reception. A large crowd showed up. Several members of the community, some of which are here today, stayed afterwards to have some conversation about the project and, you know, to note some of their concerns. Some of the concerns included the extension of Marshall Street, which is currently today an unimproved right-of-way, which means it's just vacant, it's just existing vegetation, there's no street there. As part of this application, Public Works and Planning has requested that we build that right-of-way at our cost for this development. And so, some of the residents were concerned about that right-of-way being built, and ultimately the extension of it all the way, that would connect the street network all the way to the adjacent street, Joy Avenue, that some of that frontage was undesirable according to some of the community residents, especially neighbors that would be impacted by that new street in the back of their houses. Secondly, there was some general concern about the density that's being proposed, that it's not a single-family house that we're building on this site. You know, we explained how we were working within the policy with staff that's in place, that was recently adopted, and that, you know, within the range of density for that policy, it can support in the right circumstances up to 40 units an acre. We felt like what we've presented, it's around 17 units an acre, felt well within the reasonable density range that this policy supports. And so, you know, we want to keep our application as presented to you today with the 15 cottage units as presented. So with that said, I want to to close with thanking the community again for their input. And Councilman Davis, who couldn't be here today, he's traveling for business. I met with him last week. He has, we have his support for this project, and we'll continue to work with him at the council level. And I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have, and I look forward to your input. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll have two minutes for rebuttal. Is there anyone here speaking in favor of this project? Anybody here speaking in opposition? Can you please come forward? And if you guys can go ahead and line up, and you'll have two minutes each, please state your name and address.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Gordon Stacy Harmon, and I reside at 1826 Joy Circle. I stand opposed to this application for rezoning to SP for two basic reasons: project density and development of Marshall Street. Density will be a recurrent theme tonight for me. Planning 15 units on less than one acre is incongruent with surrounding properties and will create a micro neighborhood within our neighborhood. While the developers speak of affordable housing, the average projected cost of units on this property is $250,000. Whether this is truly affordable and workforce housing is another debate. One part of the reason cited for such high costs for such small homes is the cost to partially develop Marshall Street. This is a public right-of-way that will only serve residents in this particular project. According to the developer, they are required to incur, not requested, but required to incur this expense in exchange for Public Works' approval of this project. We face increasing density throughout our neighborhood. This is not only the only project, but it is one that helps set precedent that many of my neighbors do not encourage nor want. When this project was presented to the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association, many in attendance were outspoken about concerns for this specific project. We should have comments on record, as well as a letter in opposition sent by the president of our association. One additional comment that I have, I've been a member of this neighborhood for almost 10 years. Just two months ago, when I got these zoning hearing for this particular project in the mail, that's when I learned that we had a neighborhood association. That's also when I learned that we have had this big vote to change from neighborhood maintenance to neighborhood evolving. There is, from my understanding, close to 5,000 residents in the area that's impacted by that policy change. We were never notified, and we were never even given an opportunity. While there may have been 40 people that showed up for that particular discussion, I was one of the few, or excuse me, one of the many that had no idea it was even going on, and we are moving to change back to neighborhood maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward. State your name and address.
Hi, my name is Kristi Grace, and I live at 1603 Lishy Avenue. My concerns with this are, this is two houses down from, or two lots down from where I live. My house, like the other houses in this part of the street, is a single-family home. Mine is a two-bedroom house built as a farm foreman's home in the 1800s. This part of Lishy Street is not a main corridor in any reasonable sense. Yes, a bus goes down it from time to time, but this is an old, old street with a lot of old houses on it. It's narrow. And we're talking about single-family homes in the heart of the neighborhood. It's not out on Trinity. It's not out on Dickerson. This is right in the middle of our little neighborhood, which is cohesive as a neighborhood. And I'm not comfortable with the precedent that this sets in terms of density, or in terms of the fact that it's this little kind of self-contained unit, like it's a little island within our established neighborhood. There is significant neighborhood opposition on this, and with this development being one of many that has been going on in our neighborhood, this level of change is not what anyone hoped for, or anticipated, or even understood was going to happen for, when we switched from neighborhood maintenance to neighborhood evolving. I wasn't a part of that. I was one of the many who didn't know what was happening because we weren't notified. And even those who did know that it was happening were confused and did not understand that this was what our neighborhood was going to be in for. We are not comfortable with this change, and I personally think it's a terrible precedent to set in a neighborhood that I really love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ashanti Davis. I live at 321 Edwin Street. I'm about three, four blocks from this particular development. Over the last, I don't know, six months, you guys have seen a lot of me, and I apologize, because I'm not trying to waste your time, and because I think your time is valuable. The only reason why I keep showing up is because I have lived in this neighborhood my entire life, and I am incredibly passionate about it. And while I understand that Nashville has changed a bunch and development is necessary, and I am pro-development, it's just in this particular area, there is a lot going on all at once, and we are on aging infrastructure. We have a stormwater problem. We have an electrical grid problem. I might have a power outage like three times a year. And so, there's a lot to, and keeping, increasing the density is a lot considering that those other issues are going on. And I recently joined the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association as well, and I will let you know, I live less than 500 feet from where they meet. I've lived in that neighborhood my entire life. I had no idea any of this was going on until I started showing up here. And so, to say that there's significant community engagement is sort of a misrepresentation, because I think there's a lot of my neighbors, from me going to knock on doors, collecting letters, a lot of people don't understand the impact of what's going on, and a lot of people are concerned. And the last thing I will say is, you know, a lot of developers come up here and tell you they've had significant community engagement. I used to be a litigator, and I knew that when I got the right settlement was when I wasn't happy and the other side wasn't happy. That's a real compromise, because nobody's really happy, but you got it done. And in this case, I don't feel like this particular developer's listened to any of our concerns, and hasn't compromised in any sense of the word. And if you look at the road that they're building, it's a road that goes to nowhere. It's to the backyard of somebody else. That's not creating another road to connect to the main road. It's a road that leads to somebody's backyard. And that's all I'll say. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here speaking in opposition? Okay, the applicant wants to come back. You'll have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. So respectfully, just a little bit about the noticing procedures. We, you know, we take cues of following the protocol. The council member in the district, which we did, is to meet with the Highland Heights Development Committee and then the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association, in addition to the standard metro protocols for noticing for applications to the planning commission. And so, you know, we followed what we felt was the appropriate notification process that was requested by the community, this commission, and the council member. You know, as far as the density goes, again, as stated before, based on the policy in this area, we believe that we're well within what the policy does support for a corridor, and is really pushing this type of development against corridors rather than the hearts of community, specifically at this location with access to the mass transit facility, and is close proximity to downtown and Ellington Parkway and Dickerson Pike. In regards to the Marshall Street extension, Marshall Street is a 50-foot right-of-way that goes from Lishy Avenue at our intersection all the way to Joy Avenue. We would be the first project that would be responsible for building the first component of Marshall Street, which is ultimately to tie into Joy Avenue as property redevelops in the adjacent area. We've been requested to do this by Public Works and Planning to improve connectivity in the area. We sympathize with the residents who will be affected by the right-of-way extension that currently, you know, may treat some of that area as their backyard, even though it's currently public right-of-way. But we believe that this extension is the first step in developing a future connection between Lishy and Jones that will benefit the future growth in the area and the community long term, and provide a vital connectivity within this urban infill site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioner Blackshear?
Yes. So I guess one of the reasons why we are here is because the policy has changed from neighborhood maintenance to neighborhood evolving, and we've heard some of the neighbors talk about how they weren't aware of the change from maintenance to evolving, and how, I guess, their plans to move it back. Can you talk about how the neighborhood was engaged in the process of changing the policies, and then whether there's been some official action to actually move it back to maintenance?
So this was a plan amendment that was primarily at the request of the council member due to a lot of rezoning requests in this district. So we worked with the council member to notify the neighborhoods, and it was determined that the outreach would be done through the neighborhood associations. So these were held at regularly scheduled neighborhood association meetings.
Okay, so if you weren't aware of the neighborhood association, then you would not have been aware of the plan change. Is that correct?
That is correct. And a lot of that had to do with the fact that the rules and procedures require a certain notification requirement. It was, 5,500 residents would have been notified for this plan amendment request. And it was requested at that time to the planning commission that we waive those requirements and hold these series of meetings, as well as a public open house, where over 100 people attended this, these meetings, as well as a public open house to discuss the plan amendment.
Okay, thank you. I'm empathetic to the neighbors who, I guess, didn't know that this was changing. I am interested, one of the first neighbor, I think, said that they are interested in changing it back. And I, can you talk about the process of how that works? Sorry. Can you talk about the process? And really, like, what is the first official action that would be taken to change it?
The first official action is that you would come in and meet with staff if someone weren't interested in changing their policy. And we would discuss what those changes might be. And we would talk about what things might affect those changes and what we might recommend to you all, based on the context, the existing zoning, access to transit, you know, we would discuss all those things in the policy discussion. And then we would determine a boundary for the change. And based on that boundary, we would draw up a determination form, which is essentially a fancy way of just saying a boundary for the study area. The executive director then reviews that boundary determination form. He signs it, and the applicant requesting that change brings that determination form in with an application to change the policy based on that determination form.
So this may be an unfair question, and probably really premature, even if it was fair. But how likely would it be, if something was just changed, say, a year ago, how likely would it be that it be returned to the original policy?
I don't know how likely that would be. A lot of, everything that we do regarding policy starts with a community conversation. So we'd have to go out to the community and gauge their interest in changing the policy back, and obviously, that would be weighed into all these other things that we back, and obviously that would be weighed into all these other things that we talked about, context and zoning and access and all those sorts of things.
Yeah. I know that we do have a lot of new commissioners, but the commission instructed us to go and engage the councilmen and have community meetings because we had, what I think is fair to say, a barrage of rezonings from the councilmen in this district that did not meet the policy. And item after item that came before the commission, the commission said, "We like the plan, but it doesn't meet policy, so I can't vote in favor of it because it's a neighborhood maintenance policy." And the history of how it became a neighborhood maintenance policy goes all the way back to Council Lady Pam Murray, who downzoned the entire district, all with one fell swoop to, yeah, that would have been, well, it would have been more than 10 years ago, maybe 12 years ago, but close to that. And the economy in Nashville was vastly different than it is today, and a lot of what was happening in the area was that homes were being torn down and these very minimalistic duplexes and triplexes and quads were being built. And she was trying to stop that. At least that's what my impression of why she did that was. And she rezoned it all to RS. Now, fast forward to Nashville Next, and we're trying to do the policies for the entire city, and you look at an area of town that has, for the most part, the same lot pattern throughout the district, and it has the same zoning, this RS zoning, and that screams out neighborhood maintenance. That's what that looks like. And when we engaged the community, you know, I don't know that we heard anything other than neighborhood maintenance. Now, move forward in time, just past Nashville Next, and the new councilman starts bringing in all those rezonings that we, that this, that you were a part of and that many other, one other commissioner was here for that and saw that happen. And so we were instructed, try to work with the councilmen to try to get the policy correct for the area and see if there are areas that should be neighborhood maintenance, remain neighborhood maintenance, which is the vast majority of it, frankly, and what should move to neighborhood evolving. And look at the proximity to the corridors, look at other factors, look at lot patterns, and make that determination about whether we think that is appropriate in those areas and go out and have community meetings and reach out to the community and see how they feel about it. So we did that. And then we brought those policies back to this commission, and we had a public hearing, and it was voted to change that. Now, we also say that the planning department has limited resources. That's a reality of where we, the world we live in. We elevated that project because of not just the things that this commission was being confronted with, but the council was being confronted with. We literally had council members begging us to do something about the district because of the number of disapprovals that they were still seeing at the council level. So we did elevate it above other projects. There's a long list of projects that the council wants us to deal with, whether they're UDOs that council members would like us to move forward with or whether it is readdressing some of the policies in different areas that they think that it wasn't correct in. We elevated above those because of the sheer amount of pressure that this commission and that the council was feeling and frankly, direction from this commission, who, by the way, I work for. So we took that up sooner. So to take it back up again, I'll go through all that to make sure that everybody understands the gravity of asking that. To then now take those same resources and don't use it in the other areas, but now take up the same area again, another effort to readdress this, I would say that I don't know that I would prioritize it over some of the other issues that we have, that we are confronted with, that we need to spend our resources on. It's not that it's not important. It's not that it not, doesn't need to be addressed. But without direct instruction from this commission, I doubt that it would be elevated over some of the other areas in town that haven't seen the attention that they need since Nashville Next was passed.
Can I just ask one question while we're on the policy? Can we put the policy map back up there just so that everybody can see where the neighborhood evolving and neighborhood maintenance boundaries are? No, I'll let you keep going, Commissioner.
I guess I'm just worried that, so we did Nashville Next where it was neighborhood maintenance, and then we had a public hearing. Obviously, there are neighborhood association meetings prior to that where we changed it very soon after to neighborhood evolving. We hear neighbors now saying that they didn't know about it. I know there are only three neighbors here today, but if you take their word truthfully, which I do, there are other people, many other people they've talked to in the neighborhood that also, I guess, either weren't aware or just didn't understand what this means. And now there's some, at least some appetite to take it back to neighborhood maintenance. So that's just an underlying concern, and I absolutely hear the neighbors about that. So, but right now, there is this neighborhood evolving policy in place, and although this is allowable or permissible perhaps under neighborhood evolving, the question is for us whether it still is an appropriate SP, I think it's an SP, right? SP to take place. And I probably, if I lived in the neighborhood, would be somewhat concerned about the density doubling. The, what they could do now is seven, is that correct?
Yes, seven's based on gross acreage, but we would still need to apply the subdivision regulations to any proposed subdivision to see what they could actually have.
Okay, so the max would be seven, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's based on acreage alone.
Okay. And now they're going to 15.
15 is proposed.
So that's over-doubling the density. I would probably be in favor of a little bit lower density. And also, one of the other points that the neighbors made was that, I guess, Lishy is a corridor, but it does, when you look at it, when you just, when you just look at a picture of it, it does seem like it's in the middle of the neighborhood, which obviously could give rise to concern about the density being so high compared to what they would be otherwise allowed.
I would say that the Major and Collector Street Plan identifies Lishy as a residential collector. That is the actual term it's assigned to.
Okay, thank you. So I probably would be in favor of somewhat lower density going in there, but I'm really interested to hear what the other commissioners have to say.
I guess I feel stuck on this one. I definitely understand why it's proposed based on the policy, but I also have concerns just from here and from the neighbors. So I really think I'll pass in here from the other commissioners on this as well.
I guess first on the policy, I, and thank you, Doug, for going through that, the history. It does seem, though, since it was, this has been changed in less than a year, you know, and the slide that was up before this showed all the different steps that were taken. As quickly as we, as you had pointed out, Commissioner Blackshear, about from change from Nashville Next, but it seems even kind of strange, again, we would change it back within less than a year. So I'm gonna just, you know, go by that this is, this was a direction that the commission, you know, authorized, and I feel good about it because of that. Just would, just can't go back and forth every time. You know, and I definitely sympathetic to the, what the community is saying, but it was, it's just a couple, you know, I'm not judging by how many people are here, but unless there was like a lot of people I don't know about changing it back. Do you mind going back to the site plan? So based on that, just, you know, looking at the, how it's set up now, let me ask a question too, and I guess the pervious auto court, is that why there's not as many more? Well, that's a kind of a landscape buffer question, but I guess I would, I was expecting the parking to be a little bit more developed, but I don't know if there was any more recommendations from having more green inside of it or anything. I, that's not the right question, but any islands, landscape islands or?
The islands will be required if you go beyond 15 contiguous spaces.
Okay. It's felt like it needed it, and it's pervious too. So I can understand that. So, you know, honestly, based off of, you know, the, oh, one more question, about Marshall Street. So it's supposed to connect to Joy, but that's-
That's where the right-of-way connects.
And that's a long-term plan. It's not connecting right now, or we will, this project will connect it?
Well, currently, it's unbuilt right-of-way, but it does connect from Lishy to Joy.
Show the plans, show the right-of-way on the map, on our, this is our parcel map, right?
Yes, so this is the parcel map, and you can see the site highlighted in red here. So this is Lishy identified by the purple line, so residential collector. The unbuilt right-of-way spans from Lishy to the east, as you follow the mouse, to Joy Avenue here. So it's, Jen, sorry. So that's currently unbuilt right-of-way.
It's unbuilt, but part, and so part of this project is only going to go to what was indicated on that?
Yes, just to where the property line ends along that right-of-way.
And, and right now, there is no-
It's vacant land.
Yeah, and there's no plan to extend it under Public Works?
No, not that we're aware of, no.
Commissioner, you see the large lot that's shown there?
The big one, yeah.
Yes, I believe it's a nursery.
It is.
Yeah, right now.
It's a 20-foot drop, so.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Along the side of this, is that what you're saying?
I mean, it may be more than 20 feet. I know this property intimately.
Okay, so one of our points would be is that this is about connectivity. That's why when, in whatever year this was originally platted and the subdivision was created, the planning commission, even at that time, understood the importance of connectivity in creating a street grid so that you don't end up with gridlocks and dead, dead ends. And so that's why it's shown, and if you do any research on your property, you're going to see, you get down to pull your deed, you're going to see that that right-of-way is dedicated and has been since the time that this subdivision was planted.
So, okay, so that's, that's good to hear. I guess I'd like to see, even though I don't, I guess I haven't driven past it, so I don't know how about this drop-off, but anyway, I would like to see the connection happen, I guess, that maybe that's where I'm going with it, not just the right-of-way, but connection happen. That would make the-
Why do?
Say it one more time?
Is it, your point is why just do that?
Yes, exactly. That's where I'm going. I guess I should have said that in the beginning. Yeah, why do just that portion, let's just get it all done? And then that would help the connectivity back to that, since we're putting more density on that corner and, you know, just the connection would happen and it wouldn't just dump out onto Marshall Street. Anyway, you know, based on all that, though, I, I'm in pretty much support of the plan for it. I sympathize with the community, but it seems like it was a lot of steps to get here, and I don't know why, maybe everybody wasn't, didn't know about it, but it seems like it fits within the way that that area is developing.
Commissioner Sims.
I'm with Commissioner Tibbs here. Just as disclosure, I used to own this piece of property about 10 years ago, so I know this inside out. And we tried forever to get a connector road here. And the problem is it backs into a huge nursery, and there's just not a way unless you go through somebody else's property. So this might be a worthy goal, but it's going to be a very expensive goal. So what's happening is we've got incredible density coming into a very small, what is basically a driveway, and it'll be the other side of Marshall, and I commend the people who are trying to think about how to build that road. But that's just picking up on where Tibbs is. I've got several other questions. One is, I know that there was a proposal to rezone part of this to R6. Where are we with that? I know it got, it came in front of the commission and then it's gotten deferred, I think. Well, R6 or R6A, I don't know, remember which one, but. Yeah, I mean, it's out there somewhere, so.
I'm not sure what-
There's part of this whole area that is in the process of getting rezoned to, well, it's requested and then it got deferred. I was asking where the proposal was that we actually had with R6. We may be able to ask that of Ms. Davis. She keeps up with the stuff.
Hi. There is currently a pending case that is just to the west of this property, and it's a proposal to rezone various properties to MULA along Trinity, to RM20A near Dickerson, and then to R6A, and that is, was deferred and is on the agenda for, in December.
Yeah, okay. And my concern is, I almost feel like we need to wait to see what happens there because that's going to impact, this doesn't become just an SP, it becomes more than that once the whole area begins to look more dense. So that's one of my concerns, is what, we have to take into consideration what's going on with that R6A request. The other is, I didn't know you could waive public notice. And so when somebody, when we waive public notice to go to neighborhood associations, a lot of the neighbors I know for a fact did not get notified. And I spend a lot of time with neighborhood associations, and one of the things about associations, God bless their heart, is most of them are dysfunctional. A lot of them are dysfunctional. And so there's pockets of neighborhoods, and you don't have just one association representing this whole area. You have multiple neighborhood associations, and I saw where the planning association met with many of them. But in the absence of some type of notice, unless you just happen to plug into a neighborhood association, I don't know how you actually get notified. And so I'm concerned about how we waive that right, and I guess the council has that right, but I never heard of it before.
The rules and procedures, there are certain notification requirements for minor plan amendments and major plan amendments. And as Director Sloan mentioned earlier, our resources are limited, so in cases where we have large plan amendments that are requested, we can request to you all that you waive your rules and procedures for notification requirements. And that request to waive the requirements came before you prior to the process for this amendment.
Trouble with having so many new people, I guess.
Most of our notices that we do that don't deal directly with zoning are notices that we've chosen to put into our rules and aren't required by state statute. We do a lot more notice in public hearing than is required by state statute.
Okay, the other question I have is, when you take, and this is my research background, and I'm glad a new researcher joined here, is you can get any data point to say what you want, and that's particularly true in public policy. But part of really good public policy is to look at the aggregate, and I know that term gets thrown around a lot with us, but. And in this case, we have had an enormous amount of change come to a very small area, and I think it's actually less than a third square mile. And I wish I didn't have personal knowledge of this, I guess, but I do, that the neighborhood does not feel as engaged as you would want for this kind of incredible change. I want to support density. I clearly understand that, I live in an urban area, that we're going to have to absorb much of this because we have to have moved to connector places. We have to increase employment centers. But when we have this kind of change, what really governs a lot of this is what we call the Pareto factor. If too many people are getting hurt for the sake of others, then the more imbalance that is, the worse the public policy is. And I think in this particular case, this SP is either too early or is not a good, is not good for this neighborhood at this point, so I'm going to have to vote no to it.
So my questions were about the public notice also, and I just want to double-check that I understand this right. This commission waived the right, waived the requirement for the public notice. So can somebody put the slide up with the neighborhood associations on it? on it? I just, my big question was just, in those neighborhood associations, more or less, how many people would have been notified? Are we thinking 20 people per association?
These were held at their regularly scheduled association meetings.
So, a wild guess to how many people were at each of these meetings, more or less? It doesn't have to be exact.
20 is a great guess. There were over 100 folks that participated in those meetings.
But if we'd done, the public notice would have been 5,500 that would have been notified?
Property owners, that's correct.
That troubles me. I understand this whole point, and I really understand the need for infill and urbanization, but, and I wasn't here when we waived the requirement, and so I'm sure there was a good argument about that and why it was done, but I find it really troubling.
Right. And that's the number of people who attended the meetings, you know, and a lot of times, you notify 5,500 people, they all don't show up. 100, in some cases, might be a good turnout. But there was, and that was all presented as part of the waiving of the fee or of the notification requirement, was that there was a website created, it was posted on the webpage, emails were sent out through the neighborhood association. So, it wasn't just, you show up to the association meeting and you can have a part in the conversation. There were other methods of getting the word out as well.
Okay, so that, that's good. Let me dig into that just for a sec. So, you're saying that emails went out to a lot more people than actually ended up coming to these meetings? So, that maybe the, there were more like 1,000 homeowners notified?
Yeah, I can't guess. At this point, I'd have to go back through the files on it and get an exact number of how many emails were sent out, but more than the 100 folks that showed up were notified.
And that notification is about the change from, to neighborhood evolving, not anything about this particular permit?
It was a larger area. It's about 270 acres that were considered in this major plan amendment. There were a couple of pieces of neighborhood center as well that were zoned for neighborhood center-type uses. So, there was neighborhood maintenance to neighborhood evolving as well as to neighborhood center, from neighborhood evolving to neighborhood center.
Okay, I want to listen to everybody else.
Councilman Bedney?
No pressure there. Why is the setback on this one so different than the surrounding properties? The front setback?
The setbacks are consistent with policy, in that we call for reduced and short setbacks between structures and T4 involving policy. So, we felt that what was shown was appropriate and consistent with policy.
But it's dramatically different from every, I mean, I fixed two houses there. We're building together in Asheville, actually a house right next door to it. And I remember that street has very clear setbacks that go way far, I mean, you can look at it in the picture. So, this is going to be drastic change to the, to the feel of that street.
And with evolving policy, we often expect adjacent properties within that same policy area to redevelop at some point in the future, and not so distant future. That's why we often see different setbacks than our adjacent properties that haven't yet redeveloped.
Okay. Can I ask a question to Mr. Morton?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Morton, are there any of these properties going to be dedicated for affordable housing, like with a restriction on the deed?
Restriction on the deed, we will be required to meet the current affordable housing requirements that are in place with metro government. In addition to that, we're in conversation with the council member about specific affordability requirements on his behalf, requiring one or more units to have specific criteria established for affordability. I would remind you that, you know, this applicant is really beyond the affordability conversation that's going to continue with the council member. The desire to create workforce housing, a smaller footprint, smaller square footage, a more affordable rate than what you're typically seeing in this market is very much a priority and goal of this project. And so, there's affordability, there's workforce housing. We all know that, you know, everybody has definitions, but they're both very important, especially for this growing area where you're starting to see it difficult for people to remain in the area.
But is it doubling of the entitlement? I mean, each one of those houses, this is, I mean, we're talking about two extra million dollars sale on this property. So, I was hoping if you could give me some specifics on what, do we need to wait on the council member to provide that information?
I met with him last week. He's looking forward to continue the conversation. We 've come up with some language that we feel could be supported. It has to do with what we believe is agreeable by fair housing. He, he wants, he is looking for more of a set price, which you really can't do with fair housing. So, we're trying to work within his wishes as far as for affordability to guarantee that whatever metric we come up with meets his goals and criteria for affordability. So, we just haven't come to the final endgame of what that is and how it meets fair housing.
So, I guess I don't have an answer. I mean, I, we still don't know.
At this time, we do not have specific affordability criteria established, but he will not move it forward at the council without it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so we've gone full circle. I mean, I guess one point that it does occur to me, I mean, when we talk about so many of the conflicting or competing demands that we're looking at with Nashville Next, affordability is a key point. And when you look at the, those lots, you know, most likely if they were put together and re-subdivided, you'd have three large lots, and those homes would be selling for $750,000 each. So, you know, from an affordability perspective, that's a big change. Those, that's no affordability. So, I just think, you know, we do need to consider all of the different priorities that we have. Councilman, you will have another chance to review the affordability once it comes to council. But I'm also very sensitive to a lot of the concerns. I'm sorry, sir, the public hearing is closed. So, I guess it's up to someone to make a motion or further discussion. I'm not, because you're that way, and I'm facing more of you. I got to look this way.
Let me say one thing.
Sure.
I just want to thank Ms. Davis and Mr. Harmon. I've never seen two people try so hard to protect a 5,000-member neighborhood, and I'm so proud of you for that, regardless of what the decision is up here.
I don't, okay.
So, we need, we need some kind of a motion, or, I mean, if there's...
I'll, I'll make it based on my, I make motion to approve staff recommendation.
Do we have a second? Can I second? I'll second it for the sake of discussion. So, discussion on this?
I won't vote for this as it is. I don't think it's a bad plan. I think that there is too much density in the plan. I'm not exactly sure if other commissioners would just rather vote it down regardless, or whether there is opportunity to see more work done on the plan. So, I mean, I'd say that for discussion among the commissioners.
It's, it can do seven now, and that's, that does both goals of trying to keep it more affordable as well as provide density without starting SPs off of this neighborhood.
But they can't do seven because the lots are too, they'd have to put the acreage together and then re-subdivide, correct, in order to meet? Based on pure acreage, but to his point, based on, he'd have to meet the subdivision requirements.
As an SP, you could do seven.
Right.
Right, so seven units based solely on the gross acreage of the site. So, we would still apply subdivision regulations and the minimum requirement of the zoning code if we weren't doing an SP, if we're just doing it under the existing zoning. So, likely less than seven would be the result.
Patrick, would you say three?
Well, we have four lots now, so certainly, I wouldn't see anybody going below that with what they already have.
Okay.
But you could do an SP at seven. I mean, to Commissioner Sims' point, I mean, there's a way to decrease density from where it is now.
Certainly, they could revise the plan, and we would review that, sure, for the next P.
And what about Marshall Street? Is that, is that a done deal? Does that have to be in there? I mean, if that's the, if the argument...
Well, okay, so if you're revisiting the plan altogether, then no, it doesn't have to be. But again, so there's a lot of elements in Nashville Next, and connectivity is certainly one of them. And where you have right-of-ways been dedicated for decades on the parcel maps, shown anytime someone buys a property in the area, to not expect that connectivity to happen next to a lot that size, I think is shortsighted. But no, it doesn't have to be on there.
So, okay, so...
To Doug's point, that connectivity cannot happen, though, without buying more property.
No, that property is already dedicated and is already in, it is. That's why it's on the map. It's shown. It's right-of-way dedicated to the government of Davidson County.
Well, there's a house sitting right behind it, and then the drop-off for the nursery.
If the house is there, then it was probably, if it's within, can you go to the parcel map again?
Maybe aerial might be helpful.
Yeah, this can't do this.
Well, that's, that is ownership. That's who, that Marshall Street shown on this map is the property of Davidson County. And if someone has built something on it, then they have done that improperly.
And technically, Public Works could do it, right? I mean, if that was...
Yes, if you build your fence on the public right-of-way, which happens periodically, and they come to widen the road, then your fence goes down.
Can you go to that satellite map you were at, the bigger one?
I don't know.
I think it had some red dots on it a minute ago. Yeah, there you go. 22, slide 22. There you go.
So, one of those is right there.
Yeah, and then this is, yeah, and then this is a big hole right here, so, yeah.
Well, anyway.
Yes, I guess I'm wondering if, if there is enough going on that would warrant a deferral versus an up-and-down vote, or...
Can I say one more thing about something that Commissioner Sims has brought up? Commissioner, at the time that these subdivisions were filed and approved, I doubt very seriously they had the ability to do aerial photos like this and the knowledge of where a hole is. But you may be pointing to the very reason why it's never been built.
Yeah.
And it might not ever actually go all the way through. And that's the kind of information that oftentimes we find out in these public hearings, that the goal and what we see on a map that looks like a way for connectivity to happen isn't realistic because of realities on the ground that we're just not aware of.
Yeah. And again, I just want us to go back to good decision-making processes when it comes to public policy, because unlike some things in subdivision or in other areas, rezoning, particularly with SPs, is not something that's guaranteed to anybody. And in this particular case, the aggregate requires so much careful thinking. And then we do have that request out there in December for R6, oh, it's R6A, R6A, R6. And so, looking at each data point as we've been asked to do, isn't giving us an opportunity to consider it in the aggregate. And so, I just feel strongly that this is setting a precedent that is not good for neighborhoods, and...
Commissioner, if I might, just because you've expressed some concerns about the broader policy and how we weigh those issues. I think the aggregate is important, but, and that's one sort of data point, but what you see here is the long-range growth and preservation map. And when we went through the Nashville Next process, there was a lot of deliberative thinking about existing infrastructure, where growth is appropriate based on those existing roads, public amenities, public facilities. And so, we took both the macro perspective and looked at what each individual community needed, but we also looked at broader community planning goals. And so, it's this framework here that I think gives you the, gives the planning commission the framework that it's looking for to make sure that its decision-making is holistic. I agree that aggregate numbers in a quarter-mile or whatever definition you want to give is an important data point. But the second piece of that is the infrastructure, and that is what I think has been central to many of our discussions. And again, when this growth and preservation map was put forward, infrastructure was part of what we would imagine. I think this is four miles or something from downtown, and it is currently served by bus service. And so, all of those amenities and that framework is part of what hopefully would reassure the commission that we're making holistic decisions about where growth is important. The alternative to having a approach where you put density along corridors is to do more greenfield-type development, where you're spreading development across the city and county. And there are untold costs. We tried that in the 70s and 80s, and planning as a profession has learned a lot about whether or not that works. And I know I'm speaking at a big-picture level, but again, I think, I just want to say that the framework that we are seeking for determining where growth is appropriate has been defined by this big-picture perspective. And then we always have to peel the onion and do more. But many of those decisions have been weighed here through this process.
And I agree with that, Lucy. Thank you. The question here, though, is that this is, the last seven or eight, six decisions for sure, this is the seventh, we've got the eighth coming, are making exceptions to the Nashville Next plan that was done with this kind of serious overlook. So...
Sorry, I'm not understanding, the exceptions to the plan?
Well, we're adding a lot more density, for example, where a lot of these are SPs that we did in the neighborhood.
So, the plan, you know, as we've discussed, Nashville Next is a living document, and it's something that is meant to be responsive to on-the-ground conditions. And so, when this particular policy was changed earlier this year, when the planning commission approved that policy, that then became incorporated into Nashville Next. So, when we approved the original Nashville Next plan with the growth and preservation map, that was a citywide framework. As we go through each policy amendment, it's weighed against both the needs of that community, but also against broader public needs. And our decision-making has to come from the community. It's community-driven, as this was, as was the individual policy changes that go back into Nashville Next, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it's just a lot going on in this small neighborhood with a lot of changes over, right now, it looks like over 550 residences in a third-square-mile.
Although one, I guess one point relative to some of the other things we're seeing, at least this one, we have a sense of what the design, we're not just looking at a straight rezoning. We're looking at a site plan. So, I mean, I'm actually, you know, we've had a lot of discussions in the specific neighborhood, and a lot of them have made me nervous because it's like we have no idea what's coming. Now, we have a site plan. We know, you know, we've got some control over that. To Commissioner Blackshear's point, maybe the density isn't quite right. Maybe we need to go back and reevaluate that, and that's something, you know, my understanding was part of the reason that they went to this density was because they had to compensate for the cost of quitting in Marshall Street. Well, if Marshall Street maybe isn't the factor that, you know, I don't know, but that might be a reason for them to go back and reconsider the plan. You know, that would obviously have a major impact on the site plan if they didn't access Marshall Street. So, we still need to vote, but we also, can we have the applicant?
If you have a question, we have a vote.
Yes, you look like you were ready to come. And would you want to consider a deferral, or would you prefer an up-and-down vote tonight?
I think we would love to consider a deferral, but we would kindly request a little bit more detail on the considerations from this commission, because, again, just, we were hired in April of this year, three months after this policy was in place, to study the policy that was in place. We weren't involved with changing the policy in January, but we were hired to study the policy and to give recommendations to our client about what would be appropriate to ensure all the policies... ensure all the policies, the goals in that policy were met, you know, affordability, access to transit, all those things. And so, we've worked since April to ensure that that happens. And so, again, we meet policy according to staff, the policy that's in place today. We absolutely have, you know, gone through the process that we think that you guys want. We respect the community and their input, you know, their opinions and input. We respect this Commission, the decisions it makes and the input it gives us. But we would love to have a little bit more insight on what specifically we would need to address on a deferral, because we feel like we, you know, we meet policy and, you know, we would like to work with them, you know, to understand what it doesn't meet policy-wise.
Great. Thank you. So, we need a vote. We have a motion on the table.
Yeah. Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So, if we wanted to decide to vote to defer instead, would we have to withdraw this motion?
So, we'll have to have an up-and-down...we'll have to vote, and then...and if it does not pass, then we'll have to have another motion.
Okay. And then, could we base a deferral on the idea that we need more information on whether that street can actually continue?
That could be one of the items.
Because if that street can't continue, that changes the expense for the applicant and how much money then he can then...they can then spend on the units, right?
Yep. I mean, I think that would be one of the items that they could...that would factor into their site plan significantly.
So, I would vote this...I would disprove this.
So, wait, let's...so, we'll take a vote on the first motion, and then...
I would hesitate taking that vote just yet. You can withdraw the...I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Okay.
That wouldn't entertain that motion.
And I'll withdraw my second. Now, we can entertain a new motion.
He's pointing at my microphone. How many meetings do you need to work out those issues?
If I could step in again. Talking a lot more than I usually do tonight. To Mr. Morton's point, and staff wants to know too, what exactly is...are the issues that the Commission has with this development plan, so that the time that we spend together can be more meaningful? So, I understand the issue regarding the street, and I think that the realities of the topography are something that we need to explore a little bit more now that we're aware of it. And that may wipe out the desire to create connectivity where, from an engineering standpoint, it's not really feasible. So, clearly, that's one of the issues. Are there others?
Density, for me, isn't...
Well, hold on. Don't we need to get the motion, don't we, before we get to this again?
No, actually, I'd rather have this discussion so the motion might articulate exactly what it is that we're trying to accomplish.
Density, for me, personally, was an issue. I mean, I obviously don't have a magic number, like below 11, above 4. But I would definitely like to see something, again, this is perhaps just my personal opinion, with something below 15.
But that wouldn't be...I mean, we have to...we're talking about the policy, and so the density seems to match the policy. So, I don't know that we can ask for less density.
It's an SP, right? It doesn't have to be. I mean, they're getting more than what they would otherwise get if they didn't have an SP. So, we can ask for lower density unless...
It's neighborhood-evolving. So, it contemplates density above what you may see throughout the neighborhood now. But there's not a particular number to that density. Then we look at how does it fit onto the property, you know, does it meet some of our other goals, about open space and...
Well, I know a thought I really think is not necessarily a requirement, but that will be something that will help me decide if this is a good trade-off in terms of assigning higher entitlements to the property.
So, to that point, and I'm very glad you brought that up, you just gave us two competing goals, to be clear.
Yeah.
You just told us to do some affordable...fewer units, but affordable. And those are competing goals.
They are competing, but there is an equilibrium that we can try to achieve, and that's what I'm asking.
Okay. We will ever try to succeed that.
Well, I was actually challenging the developer.
Commissioner Sims?
And I'm not sure this is possible, but in this particular case, making sure that we reach out to the people most impacted up and down Trinity, because that's the place that's going to end up...
Leishy.
I mean, Leishy, I'm sorry. Up and down Leishy, in a very specific way. And this is really to the developer. I mean, I think y'all have done a great job of reaching out to as many as you can, but to the developer, really reaching out to the neighborhood that is going to be specifically impacted by this SP.
Okay. So, we've got density. We've got neighborhood...neighbor outreach. The...we've got the road consideration.
Affordability.
Affordability. Any other items to add?
Just in the spirit of counter things. But I'm not sure I want...I don't...I like the idea of they're trying to develop this part of this Marshall. To get rid of it, I think, changes a lot, so...
But making it a private drive as opposed to building up to complete public standards is a very significant cost difference.
Okay.
Any other while we're gathering a wish list? Okay. So, would you like to restate your motion? Because I don't think we've quite gotten it. It's a motion to defer one to two meetings? Two meetings?
Well, I think two meetings, because what I heard was additional community outreach, so we'll need time for that. We are dealing with the holidays right now as we move into that time period as well. And so, two meetings will move it to the first meeting in January. And I think that that hopefully will give us time to work with Mr. Morton and him time to go out and meet with the community.
Okay. So, we...
Yeah, that sounds great.
So, a motion for a two...to a three-meeting...two-meeting deferral for those stated reasons.
Yes. And that's my motion.
Okay. Second. Any other discussion?
Do we want to clarify that there would be...the public hearing would be open or closed?
Reopen the public hearing? Okay. And the public hearing will be reopened? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So... We're going to take a short 10-minute break before item six.
I will be presenting item number six for you. This is a request for a subdivision concept plan approval to permit up to 193 lots on property located on Brick Church Lane. As a bit of history and reminder for you, this was presented at the September 28th Planning Commission meeting. The public hearing was held and closed at that time. You all chose to defer to provide an opportunity for additional community conversation. There have been community meetings held since the deferral hosted by the council member. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of the subdivision concept plan. The property shown on this map, outlined in red, is located on the south side of Brick Church Lane, east of and adjacent to Interstate 24. The property is located north of Riley Parkway and is immediately adjacent to property utilized for the FedEx Ground distribution operations. The property is currently zoned R10, one- and two-family residential zoning, which is intended for medium-intensity residential development. The property has been zoned R10 since 1973. Surrounding zoning includes R10 to the west, R10 and RS20 to the north, and IWD to the south. I have highlighted some of the surrounding zoning districts so that you can get a better idea of the zoning. The lightest color yellow is the larger area of RS20. The area in yellow, including this subject property, is R10. And the property to the south in blue is IWD. The applicant is proposing to develop this property under the existing zoning entitlements. No rezoning is requested, nor is a rezoning required to develop the property as such. The Planning Commission is granted the authority to review subdivisions through Tennessee Code annotated. The Planning Commission has given the authority to adopt regulations governing the subdivision of land, the review of sub...which this Commission has done. The review of subdivisions is then based upon those adopted regulations. This is a technical review to confirm that the proposal meets the regulations as adopted by the Commission. We often discuss policy when we're talking to the Commission about various project approvals. The relationship of policy to the subdivision regulations is different than the relationship of policy to rezoning requests. The subdivision regulations outline, for the Commission, the process by which different policies are affected by the subdivision regulations. For example, for T2 rural areas, there are rural-character subdivision regulations that must be met. For T3 suburban areas, such as this area, conventional suburban subdivision regulations are the regulations that control the subdivision of the land. I want to talk a bit about the history of the policy of this property, and I know that you can't see this map very well, and I'll zoom in in a moment. This...the adoption of policy for property is a lengthy process. The White Creek Bordeaux Community Plan, adopted as part of Nashville Next, included additional community conversations and input. The map before you is the map that the staff worked with the community on during the community engagement process. This is the map that was presented to the community as the final product during the community engagement process in 2014, and was presented to the Planning Commission in June of 2015 with the adoption of Nashville Next. Zoomed in on the map, you can see the property there. I've pointed to it with the red arrow. Was indicated as neighborhood-evolving at the time of the overall adoption of Nashville Next in June of 2015. There were 11 areas in White Creek Pike that were deferred during the overall adoption of Nashville Next. Those areas are outlined in blue. The property in question is indicated by a star. This map, what is the map that was shown during the adoption of the 11 deferred areas, and clearly shows the property in question as neighborhood-evolving. This property was not one of the areas of further study beyond the initial adoption of Nashville Next. So, I say all that to say that this property, as adopted with the overall Nashville Next plan, is neighborhood-evolving, T3 suburban neighborhood-evolving, with some areas of conservation located on the property as well. The area to the north is within a T2 rural policy area. To the south is district industrial. To the west, there are some areas of rural policy and additional neighborhood-evolving. This swath of neighborhood-evolving, located between the T2 rural policy areas to the north and the district industrial policy areas to the south, serves as a transition between these two policy areas. The area of conservation, primarily limited to the northwest corner of the property, indicates areas of steep slope. The subdivision process is a three-step process. The first step in the process is concept plan. The second is final site plan, and third is final plat. The item before you tonight is step one in this three-step process. The zoning code outlines the cluster lot option as an alternative option for subdivisions development. This is something that is permitted by right if the property is zoned as such. This property is. The zoning code cluster lot option provides for flexibility of design with subdivisions. It requires the creation of common open space and encourages the preservation of natural features such as steep slopes. To get the lot yield of a cluster lot option, 15% of the gross land area is subtracted from the total to account for infrastructure. The remainder is divided by the required zoning lot, in this case, 10,000 square feet. The lot yield, maximum lot yield for this property is 242 lots, based on the cluster lot provisions. Based on the cluster lot provisions, also, lots may be reduced in size, the equivalent of two zoning districts. For this case, it would be 5,000 square feet. And perimeter lots fronting an existing street must be 90% of the zoning requirement, or 9,000 square feet in this case. The zoning code further goes into requirements on hillside development. The zoning code states that single-family subdivisions in areas that have 20% or greater slopes are encouraged to utilize the cluster lot provisions. In general, lots shall be clustered on the portions of the site with natural slopes of less than 20%. The proposed plan includes 193 single-family residential lots utilizing the cluster lot option as encouraged by the zoning code. The lots range in size from 6,000 square feet to 9,000 square feet. The plan proposes two access points to Brick Church Lane and two stub streets to provide for future connectivity should adjacent properties develop. The connectivity is one of the goals of the policy. All lots front onto public streets, and sidewalks meeting metro standards are provided throughout for the prop...and for the property frontage along Brick Church Lane. The cluster lot provision requires that 15% of the development be set aside in open space. The proposal sets aside 22.7 acres of the site area, or 34%, into common open space. Recreational facilities are required in cluster lot subdivisions, and they're required to be provided with unusable open space. A development of this size with this number of lots would require two recreational facilities per the zoning code. This development is providing a sitting area, horseshoe court, playground, and dog park, exceeding the requirement of the zoning code. Additionally, a natural walking trail is being provided in the large northwestern portion of the site. As you'll recall, this is the portion of the site with the conservation policy, which they are setting aside into common open space with a natural walking trail. A C-level buffer is provided along the perimeter of the site as well. In reviewing the subdivision, staff reviewed the proposal against the subdivision regulations. The plan meets the subdivision regulations. The plan meets the cluster lot provisions of the zoning code. It provides common open space and places areas of steep slope into the common open space. Additionally, a traffic study was submitted by the applicant and reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, Lisa. So, the first item for us, as she mentioned, this was heard on October 26th, and at that time, we closed the public hearing. So, the first item for us to consider is whether or not we want to reopen the public hearing. So, I need a motion from the Commission if we're going to go forward with reopening the public hearing.
I move to reopen the public hearing.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Any other discussion? Motion carries. So, we will go ahead and reopen the public hearing. So, the applicant will have 10 minutes. The applicant here?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Jim Murphy of the Bradley Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant, address at 1600 Division Street. I'm going to turn this over to Adam Segura of Dale Associates, the engineer, to make some comments. I'll follow up, and then we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. My name is Adam Sager with Dale and Associates, 516 Heather Place. Appreciate everyone here. Just going to repeat a few items, kind of bullet point it, kind of what we've heard, and kind of go back over all of the points that were mentioned. This is a straight zone subdivision. It is R 10. It does meet the policy in the area. Like was mentioned, there are 242 lots that are allowed under the calculation for a cluster lot. We're proposing 193 on the plan that was submitted. I want to reiterate that this property is bounded by other R 10 zoning, industrial property, and the interstate on the right side. All departments have recommended approval. We've worked with staff, fire, public works, stormwater, metro water services, planning, and everyone, and everyone recommends approval. One of the reasons why this was deferred last time was to engage the community. While straight zone subdivisions aren't required to hold public meetings, we have attended two community meetings on this. One was done before the last meeting back in September. The most recent one was held on November 4th. That's this past Saturday. That's the two that we have attended. You may hear things about traffic. I don't know what we're going to hear, but one is probably going to be traffic. Last time, when this was brought before the planning commission, the counts were in question, so we went back and studied that. The counts were made in March of 2017, and the road was not closed during the time of those counts. That was confirmed. And just to be doubly sure that we got that right, the traffic consultant went back out in October during school. Road was very much open, recounted the entire road, and all of that data came back to be the same as what was really already in the traffic study. So, the differences were negligible. So, all those traffic requirements still apply. I want to reiterate that the counts that were done on Brick Church Lane are very much a low-volume road. It's in comparison, it's percentage-wise compared to some of the other two-lane roads in Davidson County. Site distance was mentioned. We have further studied site distance. That is something that will need to be met at the final site plan process. Nonetheless, just to be clear, we have studied the site distance now, and we exceed the site distance requirements at each access of the subdivision. We are doing above and beyond improvements that, more than what the traffic report requires. And so, those are a few of the things I just wanted to reiterate, and I think that's all I have for now. I'll reserve the rest of my time to answer any questions later on and turn it back over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Jim Murphy, and I'll be very brief so that we can hear from the neighbors who I'm sure have comments. I've provided you with a letter that states the law in this area. You've got to have evidence that indicates that this plat, this plan doesn't meet the subdivision requirements. The fact that it doesn't meet the concept plan, or it should be zoned differently, or it should be policyed differently, all those things are irrelevant for purposes of determining whether this plan meets the subdivision regulations. Your only role here is to determine if this plan meets subdivision regulations. Most of what I was going to say, Ms. Milligan's already said, so I'm not going to repeat it, and we'll just wait and hear the comments from the neighbors and then respond. Thank you.
They're going to hold two minutes for rebuttal?
Yes.
Yes.
I thought I said that at the beginning.
You did. You did. Thank you. Okay. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here speaking in favor of this project? Anybody here speaking in opposition? And if I can ask that you please line up, and you will each have two minutes. Please state your name and address. And I would just ask, given the volume of people that are here, please reconsiderate with your comments. And if you sense that your neighbor has said something very similar, yeah, say, just let us know you support what your neighbors have said. Okay?
Good evening, commissioners, vice chair of fire, director of slum, planning staff, everyone who's taken the time to be here today. I see I already have my five minutes, so I won't ask for that. My name is Jennifer Hagan Dear. I live in a 1965 ranch on five and a half acres on 681 Brick Church Lane, approximately less than half a mile from this located property. It's a one-mile rural two-lane road with a double line in the middle, a blind hill and a curve and a steep hill. When it ices and when it floods, there's really no way out except to go to either Knight Road or Brick Church Pike. That's the only two lanes. So, we're talking about putting two entrances and loading 190 homes onto a two-lane rural road that dead-ends into two other main roads. I understand the lawyers. I'm a recovering lawyer myself. Let me say, first of all, I really appreciate your time, energy, and attention. Reading our comments, on behalf of our White's Creek neighbors who are here tonight, listening to us and reopening the public hearing, we really appreciate that. We think that our community voice is very important. We think the fact that we live here is a very big deal, and that just because a developer has a right to do something, or can do something, they think they have a right to do something, or they can do something, doesn't mean they should do something. And we really, as you know, as a former commissioner, I know you have a long evening before you, so we're going to try to make this brief, and I have asked, all of our neighbors have discussed not repeating ourselves ad nauseam. I do want to go back, though, that this was originally on the consent agenda, and, you know, we have a staff report for a reason. You have a role here. The staff report makes a recommendation. The staff report does not make a dictation. The staff report provides you with information you need to make a decision, and we're hoping that you do consider that decision very thoughtfully this evening. We believe that this is improper for our area, that yes, the policy is incorrect, and that it needs to be changed, but the policy is T 3 neighborhood evolving, because it slipped through. Because I don't know if you guys were around during Nashville Next. We were here a lot, and we were fighting about a lot of different things, not fighting, discussing, working, trying to get there. Planning staff was amazing, put up with a lot from us, and always have, and we really appreciate it. This property slipped through. And you know why it slipped through? Because someone lives right in the middle, that center right there. This is Knight Drive. Brick Church Lane is over here. This is an overpass. There's industrial, and all of these are a minimum of four and a half acre lots. And this big piece of land surrounds one homeowner who's sitting here today, who's lived there their entire lives. And now they're going to build 190 homes right around a homeowner, and a grandmother, and a family. Rest of the family lives across the street. A whole family lives down here, and I'm raising my two kids and my four dogs down the street. I never intended to live around 190 people coming out on a two-lane rural road, where people have had accidents, where a fire truck can't get down when an ambulance is in the room. I've got a neighbor two doors down who has a child with a heart condition, who will have a heart transplant in her life. If it ices and it rains, and those people need to get out, 190 families need to get out of there, need to go to Knight Drive and try to get to the interstate, or go to Brick Church to try to get to Riley, how are we supposed to get an ambulance down there? So, my understanding, this is not compliance with cluster lots. This is not free usable space. Walk this property. Have you walked the property? Have you driven down Brick Church Lane? Come walk in our shoes, come live in our neighborhood, and talk to me about subdivision regulations. I'm sorry. This should never have been T 3 neighborhood evolving. It should be T 2, and we fully intend to come back and seek an amendment to the policy. We have our councilperson here who supports us, and our councilperson who's also against this development. So, this development can be approved and go forward. We're going to court regardless, because this ain't going to happen in our neighborhood. This developer doesn't live here. They live on big lots in other areas, and they make these tiny little lots in our rural neighborhood. And if you come and look, this is the neighborhood, not the big aerial footage you saw on the other side of Brick Church Pike. We're not saying you shouldn't develop. That's where the development goes. There are over 800 homes in our community right now in the pipeline, and we have two-lane rural roads. We have a church, two churches and two schools within a half mile of our house, and they don't have sidewalks on Brick Church Pike. The infrastructure's insufficient to handle this. This road is insufficient, and this does not belong in our community. I'm here just to tell you that. They're going to handle the issues of flooding and all the other things, and guess what? If it complies with subdivision regulations, you do what you got to do. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, vice chair. My name is George Ewing. I live at 4601 White's Creek Pike, a little distance off this map. We did see earlier some maps showing R 10 abutting this. I'd like to point out that north and west of this, there is a small triangle that is under policy T 3 NE. The rest of the properties adjacent to this are T 2 and protected into different subdivision regulations. I wasn't going to speak on Nashville Next. I had a whole lovely speech about comparative density, where the existing properties on mile-long Brick Church Lane come out to about 16 acres per unit. The 193 lots is about 50 to 75 times more dense than the existing block pattern that's here. The T 3 NE serves a purpose in connectivity in suburban areas that are meant to be developing towards more urban areas. And this is not that. It doesn't have the connectivity. It's bracketed. The little triangle next to it is the only other thing near it that's T 3 NE. I'd like to speak a little bit about the metro planning commission staff reports from Nashville Next. Five rural workshops were held in White's Creek community. At the Nashville Next public hearing on June 15th, 2015, several attendees voiced opinions, some of them being rural policies should be applied to the entire White's Creek study area to help preserve the rural area's character. Another comment, rural policies should be applied to these areas to be harmonious. Another comment, rural policy conflicts with the suburban zoning should displace it. Another comment, applying suburban policies would be detrimental to the rural character. So, for many White, this is from the planning staff. For many of the White's Creek community members, there are strong opinions that all character policies in the area should be rural to reflect the character of White's Creek and the community vision to preserve and maintain the area as rural. There was a lot of focus on those 11 areas. It was a very busy time. Planning was awesome. It is hard for people to have time to come and be a part of this community planning, and they were. And they're here again. So, I thank you for your time and for listening.
My name is Trey Sutherland. I live at 631 Brick Church Lane. A map, it's like photos one back off of the map right there, and I guess we didn't get any type of notification that any type of, you know, subdivision was being planned or anything like that. I found out about two weeks ago. I went to the Saturday, last Saturday's hearing, and they got up and talked about, like, you know, everything's done, you know, we're all this, that, and the other, and, you know, it's disappointing that you come and you get kind of backdoored on a, you know, a family's been living there forever, and they're going to surround them with all them homes and this, that, and the other, and, you know, it's just, I oppose it, and I wish that y'all would do the right things and keep our community rural, because, I mean, as you can see by the map, we've lived there our whole lives and everything, and we would like to keep it the way it is.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Angela Williams. I live on a family farm started in 1787 at 7203 Old Hickory Boulevard. I'm the ninth generation to live there. White's Creek is truly historic and rural, and we are not anti-development. We are pro-rural character. I was one of the organizers of the Nashville Next in our community, and 98% of the people, over 500 people showed up to that in our small community, 98% said, "We want to remain rural." That is the wish of our community. So, how do we pull this off? We're having something with straight suburban north of Riley Parkway. Riley Parkway is really the corridor that separates suburban, welcomes suburban development, and then, you know, coming out into the rural area. Just off of this piece alone, the Old Hodges has proposed 100 units. The Thornton Grove has approved 550 units, and Old South, which we fought vehemently because it came in before Nashville Next. It was probably the whole reason that White's Creek ripped bananas over Nashville Next and had the most attendance at any of the meetings, was because we didn't want what they were selling. But they had already gotten in, it was their right, all that kind of stuff. So, if you count them up right now, there's 750 units planned in a one and a half mile radius of that. That is not our community's wishes. Our wishes are to remain rural in character. That doesn't mean not developing. That's rural in character. This clearly is not rural in character, and we need your help and your support to maintain the integrity of our community. Thank you.
My name is Marie Hudson, and I live on 534 Brick Church Lane, and I'm 89 years old. And my family has lived on the property since, say, 1890s, and I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Wesley Hudson. I live at 527 Brick Church Lane, which is directly across the street. I'm going to read notes, because I get emotional about it if I don't. Thank you all for volunteering and your patience in all these matters that you deal with every day. I know White's Creek comes up a lot in your meetings lately because it's one of the last rural refuges in Nashville. The house that we were raised in, that my mother lives in, is 100 years, over 100 years old. Brick Church Lane is an established, small rural community that's a part of the bigger White's Creek community. It's always been pretty much far, either past been farmland, or is even still farmland. My brother and I have kept cattle. We've cut hay on the neighbor's property to feed the cattle. It's not an area of transition. It is a stable, historic rural community, and it's not just an empty space begging to be developed. As some of the others have said, the properties have been owned by families for generations and generations. We're in our sixth generation there, with four generations living on the property at this time. We never did understand how it got pulled out and cut out of the Nashville Now plan and changed, and I'll be the first to tell you, I'm not smart enough to understand T 2, T 3, T 4, whatever. It was always agricultural to me. That was the zoning it was supposed to be. That was where it was supposed to stay, but somebody decided they didn't want agriculture in Davidson County anymore. I-24, Riley Parkway, does separate that from the rest of the suburban developments around. It's the line for White's Creek. If you look at everything north and west of that, it's pretty solid. So, I just ask for your disapproval. Thank you.
My name's James Hudson. I'm retired from the Nashville Fire Department, and my family, like my brother said, has lived on this for six generations. This development does not fit in with the neighborhood. We've got other families that have lived there for generations. I'm not sure, but I don't believe anybody from the developer has actually walked that property. They've had aerial photos, but it does not show how rough that property is. The drainages, the bluffs, it's going to send more water to my property, it's going to send more water to Fed Ex. There's no way to drain it enough to keep it from doing that. There are many 80 to 200-year-old trees on this property that will be gone. This is GSD. This is not USD. There'll be no street lights, no trash pickup. We have problems with trash dumped on us all the time now. The police and fire response will be longer for this dense of, dense of development. I know other people are going to speak about traffic, but I just want to say that if you can do all the traffic studies you want to do, until you've lived there for 70 years, you don't realize how that curve and hill is. It's very dangerous. I move that we don't allow this development. Thank you.
I'm Chase Sutherland. I live at 605 Brick Church Lane. I'm the fourth generation to live there, and they've talked about doing traffic studies, but those traffic studies don't really do justice to what I've seen, what I've been involved in. I totaled a car on my way home from work. Like, I mean, and we want to add 193 more people. That's going to triple, quadruple even the wrecks. The road freezes over in the winter. It floods constantly. I mean, there's just no way that this type of road can support that type of growth, especially so rapidly. There's so many things that go on. I have little cousins that are driving. I eventually want to raise my kids in the same house I'm in, and I don't want to put I eventually want to raise my kids in the same house I'm in, and I don't want to put them in that danger that I had to go through and that I've seen many other people go through. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie McGee, and I live at 627 Brick Church Lane, and I want to thank you all for listening and being here and for our safety concerns. But I want to address the Metro subdivision regulation, also the AAS HTO Regulation 3-92A. It states that all new metro roads must meet the site distance per subdivision, which is 140—which is 445 feet of site distance for 40 mile-an-hour road. However, the new proposed roads that are going to come off of Brick Church Lane, they do not meet this. You should have information that we sent to you guys last night for pictures, and also the Nashville Planning has done that. Their name is on that. It talks about the minimum street and how it's not there. Basically, the east road coming out on the top of the hill, if you're looking to the west, it has a 425 distance looking west. And on that same street, if you're looking to the right toward the interstate, it has only 266-foot distance. This does not fall within the 445-foot. Also, this exact street that they're proposing here is not across from Trail Hollow. It's adjacent, like diagonal—I should say diagonal—from it. And if you go down to the bottom of the hill, the west road, where the curve is, it only has a site distance of 364-foot. These regulations do not even fall within the required—the requirement. Also, another guy on our street, Elizabeth Ince Street, Jason, his wife was in an accident also, totaled her car out as well. We have totaled about 20 homeowners on this home—on this whole street right now. You've got two that's totaled homes out already with this curve and this steep hill. Please, y'all, please. Again, like they said, unless you've driven this, you don't know the dangers. Please reconsider.
Thank you.
My name's Marcella Hudson, and I live at 527 Brick Church Lane, which is directly across or here, and my driveway comes out right at the top of the hill. I would like—to—I first of all, I do appreciate everything that y'all do. I would like to try to address connectivity, which a lot of it has been already addressed, so I'll try to keep it quick. I lived here—and have lived here—for 20 years. Again, this area is not part of the evolving area around it. It looks like our street access is 24. It does not. You have to go down a long hill and up and come to Brick Church Pike and turn and get onto Briley. There is no access to 24. The other end, if you try to go out the other way, it's a good three-mile drive on similar two-lane country roads to try to access 24. Night drive does not have access to Briley Parkway. My apologies. Let's see. Every 7:30 every morning, I take my granddaughter to school on Brick Church Pike, just on the other side of Briley. It is extremely difficult to get out because it is bumper-to-bumper traffic. It's a 40-mile-an-hour road there. Sometimes—anyway, sorry. This is—a proposal is incompatible with the rural pattern. It is inconsistent with the general plans for connectivity, and I ask that you disapprove. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Elise Hudson. I live at 4601 Whites Creek Pike. I'm obviously related to these folks. I want to thank you. I just recently learned that you are all volunteers and unpaid, and I didn't know that all of the years, and oh my God. So thank you for that. That's amazing. I want to say I actually disagree with the guy who spoke earlier. I think you do have the authority to disapprove this. I think that's been proven about three to five a year. It's not very often, but you do have that two-point approval of not only the zoning, but also the policy and the community character, and there is a precedence for that. So you do have the authority, if you want to, and we make the case, to disapprove this. Also, there are only 20 homes on Brick Church Lane, 20, and you're about to add 200. You're about to add 10 or 20—yeah, 10 times more homes than exist today on Brick Church Pike. The average density of that today, it's like 16 or 17-acre lots. If you add those in, it's just a little bit over one acre per lot. That's a dramatic change if this gets approved. So I'd also like to talk to you about the tree canopy, because that's very important. Most—the vast majority of this lot is complete dense forest. I sent you guys pictures of that. The Nashville—the subdivision regulations, the code, and the Community Character Manual all talk about protection of cedar glades. There's a big area of cedar glade down exactly where that most dense area is. It wasn't listed as conservation, but it does exist, and we had an arborist confirm it for us and walk the land last week. So with that, you know, they—those trees also provide a significant sound barrier to us for FedEx and the interstate. So if those go away, then the whole neighborhood is going to have more sound pollution. Mayor Berry has recently focused a big effort on tree canopy preservation. So we ask that you please take these things into consideration, look at this, and use your authority to disapprove. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for allowing us all to be here tonight to talk to you about the proposed development. My name is Lisa Proctor. I live at 4129 Dry Fork Road. I don't live near the development, but I'm a friend and neighbor to several of the people that do live on Brick Church Lane. I wanted to give you a little overview of Whites Creek if you're not familiar with our community. Possibly you are, maybe you're not. We have approximately 1,400 to 1,500 people that live in Whites Creek. Think about that. We have about—excuse me—that's the number of houses, and we have 3,400 people in our community. If you allow 200 homes, and each home has two and a half people, that's 500 additional people in our community of Whites Creek 37189. That increases our population to 14.7%. Down the pipeline, if we get 1,000 homes in Whites Creek at 2.5 per home, we're going to have a 73.5% increase in population, and we do not have the infrastructure for that type of rapid growth. That's what you need to think about. Rapid growth in a rural area. We have one traffic light. We have two-lane roads. We have one gas station. We have no grocery store. We have a post office, because we have 37189, and we have a bank, and we have two restaurants, and we like it that way. I moved there 14 years ago, grew up in Goodlettsville, moved to Whites Creek, and love it. So please do vote no in this proposal.
Thank you.
Lisa Johnson.
Can I state your address?
I'm sorry. 4001 Ridgemont Drive.
Okay.
I've been advised on good authority that I need to ask you all that a study to determine that if the—if this property—that if this property should be—I apologize—that a study to determine if this property falls within the footprints of the Brick Church mound should be determined. And if you're not familiar with what the Brick Church mound is, it was the last major Mississippian period—the large—it was the last major Mississippian period architecture—archeological development. Am I making myself clear? Probably not. I apologize. It's an archaeological mound, and it was the last one that was in Davidson County before it was destroyed by a developer. And it was less than a half-mile away from this property. That's why it is known as the Brick Church mound. And there are hamlets all through the area, and there are artifacts and human remains that are most probably present beneath the service that need to be protected and preserved. And they are most—most probably there, and this needs to be monitored and looked at further before this—anything is done further on this property.
Thank you.
Please consider that. Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Pete Luboff, and I live at 1211 Melrose Lane. I just discovered something in this process. I became political through this. We'd discovered by mere chance that this was going on, that this development was happening, and the notification system was really wrong, and it tracks all the way through the system to defending yourself or presenting your case. Notifications are terrible. The appointments get changed. Contractors put—leave out the old signs with dates when they've changed the dates. And there's stuff like that that's going on. I feel it's essential that—you know, a mandate should be—without the notification, you've got nothing. You've got nothing to work with, and it's in the favor of the—of the contractors. I think you'd have to look into that and come up with a really cohesive policy about how—that's the whole thing, is that you know that you've got something going on, and you've got to want it, and you've got to know about it to do anything about it. Thanks. You guys are great.
Hi. I'm Deborah Watson. I'm at 657 Brick Church Lane, which is about 105 acres, and I want to just talk about the police department down there. I was helping—my son, my husband, and I were helping a neighbor put away a horse that had got out next door, and we got the horse put up, and soon as we got the horse put up, it was dark. And I looked down to the road, and I see a car stopping with the headlights stopped and started shooting at us. Called the police department, and 30 minutes later, after they didn't show up, called them again. The policeman comes out some—you know, probably about 30 minutes later, and he just said, "You know, we don't have the police force in this area to protect y'all." He said, "You should just—you know, try to get the license plate number." I'm thinking, "You wanted me to run down this guy because we don't have the police department, but yeah, you want to put 190-something more families out there, and they can't even support what we have." So this is a proud community, and this isn't right.
My name is Herman Sutherland. I live at 641 Brick Church Lane. This property here. I lived there, this whole area, my children, son here, daughter here, son here. I've lived on that property over 66 years. I remember when Brick Church Lane was a gravel road, but as of now, we still have shoulders on it, and it's very narrow. I mean, you get run off. There's cars run off the ditch every year when it snows in front of my son's house, when he makes that curve. Ice will stay there during the winter because it's on the north side of the hill, and it's there maybe a week or so after the snow has melted everywhere else. I just want to say I am so concerned about the safety of the street and of all the people there, because there's been numerous wrecks on the road, and I appreciate y'all's service, and I would hope that you would vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for listening to us.
Of course.
I'm Connie Sutherland. I'm his wife. I've lived out there 48 years. I feel like I've been out there all my life. It's very rural. I can tell you how rural it is because I got bit by a copperhead. So it's really in the country, we feel like, and we have ponds on the—on the land, but we also have—you know, we're just a proud neighborhood. And that hill, my grandson talked about getting hit. He was at the bottom of that hill where they're having their road come out of, and that they have an industrial thing, and a truck was backing in, so you have to stop because they're backing in. And when you do, someone come right over the hill and hit him in the back end and totaled his car. So that's how bad it is there. You can't see when you go over the hill how bad it is. Either way, when you go the other way toward our house, it's the huge curve, and I can't tell you, you can't keep a mailbox. You're putting a mailbox up every day. So I'm telling you, it floods across the street, and—the Brick Church that he's talking about has no red light, and sometimes you have to wait—if you're going left, you have to wait maybe—you know, five minutes to even get out, and then you're taking a chance because they're flying. It says 40 miles an hour, but they're not doing 40 miles an hour. So I was pleased with y'all with reconsideration and help us out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Tim Watson. I'm at 657 Brick Church Lane, and a lot of you may have seen me at Opryland for many years. I did 30 years with Gaylord out there doing shows for all of our tourists and on the General Jackson. Worked my butt off to buy 105 acres right across the street from this so I could live away from everything and not have a neighbor right up under me. And I know most of you have that same dream. I hope you do. And—but I have—in the last few weeks, within the last month, I had to cut a young lady out of a car that was upside down, had to cut a seatbelt off of her because she flipped right in front of this property down here where the curve is. It's always wrecks there. I have to—I've had to call 911 several times to get people. They have jumped a guardrail in that very curve right there. And also, I work with Kid Rock nowadays, and he sent me a message to make sure I put in his disapproval about this too, because he lives right behind me on the other side. And the traffic is just—there's no way this little road can handle the traffic. And if you look at all the property out there, like I said, I've got 105 acres. Kid Rock's got 200 acres beside me. We've moved out there so we would have big parcels of land. I hope Davidson County doesn't try to divide itself up so much that everybody's living on top of each other. It's already that way in a lot of parts of town. I looked hard to find a piece of property like that in Davidson County. It was a dump when I bought it. It had been dumped on for 60 years. You couldn't get through it with a four-wheeler. It now looks like a golf course. I worked my butt off on that property. It's why I don't appreciate developers coming in. I could develop my property. I have the right to. Don't mean it's the right thing to do. I wouldn't do it to my neighbors. So anyway, I just hope you will consider that. I know that may—I don't understand how this piece of property is even zoned the way it is, because it's just one little piece that sticks up by the interstate, one little strip there. It's industrial behind it, and we're RS20. So anyway, thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jason Holloman, 4800 Charlotte Avenue, and I'm here today on behalf of the Hudson family. I do think it bears mentioning, even though I understand the staff report, I understand the applicant's comments, that this has been identified as T-3 suburban instead of T-2 rural. But when you look at the actual character of the area, it is clearly a rural area west of Whites Creek. When you look at this area and you look at the T-3 and T-2 definitions, you see that "T-2 suburban" is designed—or sorry, "T-3 suburban" is designed to create enhanced suburban residential neighborhoods, improve pedestrian and bicycle vehicular access. But members, in this area, you heard earlier today, there are only 22 homes along this mile stretch there. The average acreage per home—acreage per home—is 16 acres per home. This is a proposal for seven units per acre. It's a dramatic swing, and when you look at adding the cluster lot option to this, you're talking about taking R-10 zone property, minimum of 10,000 square-foot lots, and reducing that down even smaller. I thought it was 6,000. I was told it was 5,000. At that rate—I live in Sylvan Park, one of the most urban neighborhoods in the city. We have minimum lot sizes of 7,500 square feet. You're talking only 2/3 of one of the most densely populated neighborhoods in our city is what we want to put on this 66-acre tract. So with that in mind, how can you do what you're here to do and look at the subdivision regulations and disapprove this? First of all, I was here back in February when this body expressly, at staff's recommendation, disapproved on the sole basis of Tennessee Code Annotated 134203, which is also written into your subdivision regulations, that requires development to be harmonious development for municipality. You can do it based on that. You can also do it based on not meeting the cluster lot requirements for open space as well as usable recreational space with the TVA easements, the stormwater, and the steep slopes.
Thank you. Thank you. Council lady? Oh.
Okay. Hello, my name is Council Lady Brenda Haywood, and again, to you esteemed honorable people, I just, I'm just grateful that you're taking your time to hear us tonight, and I don't take it for granted, nor do I take it lightly. There are many things that I could say, but I'm going to limit what I will say. Number one, of course, I'm the councilperson for District 3. I like to articulate that I'm a retired teacher. And as a retired teacher, if you look at the hierarchy of needs that PRJ put together, the number-one need is for a person to feel safe, okay? And I'm also an ordained minister. I know that's really repulsive for some, but that's what I am, and I have to share that to make this next point. I heard Commissioner Sims say something earlier that I took to heart. She said, "Oftentimes, too many people are being hurt for the sake of some." And then, I heard someone say that just because something is right, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. If you're coming down the interstate, and if the limit is 70 miles per hour, and you see a person, a dog, or deer, or whatever, in the street, then you're just going to instantaneously slow down, because at that particular juncture and at that time, 70 miles per hour would not be the right thing to do. So, as an ordained minister, I feel like sometimes we have a moral obligation, just to simply unequivocally to do the right thing. As far as Brick Church Lane, many people talk about living there for an excess of 50 years, 60 years. We have a young man that's probably 27 years old. Well, I live probably, and don't quote me on this, but on a good day, I could walk to Brick Church Lane. I'm thinking right now, without the proper measurements, that I probably live one half, not, less than a mile from Brick Church Lane. I live on Brick Church Pike. I cannot enumerate the number of times that I've traveled Brick Church Lane. In that particular area, I was driving my car, one of the heaviest cars that you could possibly buy. It was a very heavy car. I was head-on down there. My Mercedes was towed out, and I was hospitalized in that, very close to where they're talking about. Being a teacher, I'm often at Republic School. Right now, I'm attempting to get a light right there, because so many of the parents and the faculty members, they contact me about the heavy traffic that's right there at Brick Church Lane. Very, very familiar in terms of the accidents there at Brick Church Lane. I've been down there, I've seen them, I've almost been involved in some of the accidents down there. You know, often, well, several times, you've had some of my constituents to talk about the number of acres that they have, and how hard they've worked, and what they have acquired financially. And I think that's fine, but my sensitivity does not lie there. My sensitivity lies in the safety of the parishioners at the churches. My sensitivity lies in the people that travel that road, which, with that steep hill, is very, it's extremely dangerous. As a teacher, when we would have ice and snow, there are particular areas, primarily in Jolton, that the roads would be traveled, and there are several roads that would determine as to whether school would be let out or not on a particular icy or snowy day. Well, Brick Church Lane is one of those particular lanes that they use to determine as to whether we would attend school on a particular day. Because on any particular snowy day or what have you, it takes streets like Brick Church Lane much longer for the ice to evaporate. So, I stand before you again, with not as much sensitivity as it relates to someone owning in excess of 100-and-so acres and working hard. That's very impressive, but that's not why I stand before you today. I stand before you due to the safety of many people that are put in harm's way, I feel like, if this development. Now, I've talked to the developers, which I highly regard and I highly respect, but I think there has to be a compromise. Am I pro-development? Unequivocally, absolutely. I'm for smart development. I just don't think this would be smart development. To show you how much I am in favor of development, my house sits on three and a half acres, and I'd have to check with my husband, but I think we have eight or nine, we have acres that are beyond the ones that we, that our house sits on. In excess of the acreage that our house sits on, I guess we probably, we don't have 120 or 2,000, but we probably have eight or nine acres, other than the three and a half. And I would love, one day, to build the mini houses for the homeless. That's what, that's, I'm very ambitious, you know, one day, when I'm not on the council, you know, I'm very interested in the homeless. I'm not interested in sitting in the middle of thousands and thousands of acres, but to each its own. But again, if I have a concern at all, my concern is the safety of my constituents, the safety of the children that attend schools in my area. So, I leave with you the fact that, again, I admire the builders, the engineers. I admire the expertise, the intellect that it has taken. I have taught young people that have become developers and engineers, so it's, that's very impressive. But above all, I would like to stand here as the District 3 councilperson to say that as it stands right now, I would love for the record to show that as it stands right now, I am vehemently opposed. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in opposition? If not, we'll have your two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Commission. Again, Jim Murphy, 1600 Division Street. What we've heard from the neighbors are expressions of fear and concerns about the development. There were no facts that support a finding that this plan doesn't meet the subdivision regulations. The issues that were raised regarding the ash-toast standards have in fact been addressed in the conditions of approval. As Mr. Sager mentioned, the engineers have determined we can meet the site distance requirements, and that has to be done when the final plat is submitted. If the final plat doesn't meet the site distance requirement, then you won't approve the final plat. You can't approve the final plat, because it doesn't comply with the regs. As regards archaeology, the burial mound issue, if human remains are found on the property, there's a state statute that deals with how you deal with that. Flooding, obviously, at the final site plan, we will submit plans that will show that it meets the stormwater regs. If it meets the stormwater regs, it's not going to cause flooding on surrounding properties. And the same with trees. If there are trees that are preserved, the zoning ordinance deals with how you deal with preserving trees, and that will have to be met at the final site plan. Finally, in response to Mr. Holloman's comment about the development not being in harmony with the, with the community, if it meets the subdivision regulations, it's in harmony with the development of the community. There's multiple cases in this state that say that governmental bodies cannot deny an application that meets regulations on the grounds that's out of harmony with the community. So, for those reasons, this plan should be approved. Thank you. We're here for questions, if you have any.
Great. Thank you. All right. Councilman Bennet, are you volunteering to go first?
Well, I was, I'm new here, so.
Please.
I just wanted to see if I can call Mr. Holloman back in, because I didn't understand what he was trying to say. Is that acceptable?
So, it's up to the commission if we would like to give him a stated limit of time?
I just wanted him to clarify, because I, because he was kind and health, because he was very eloquent.
Sure.
I'm not used to the two minutes yet, so.
So, I appreciate it. I promise I won't abuse this.
Sure. I think there's two points. The first point that I was making was that this commission, and I think this is just from Mr. Murphy, and I disagree, this commission has, as recently as February, at staff's recommendation, disapproved a subdivision which otherwise met regulations on the basis that it was not harmonious development compatible with, with the community. And here, you have such a stark swing in the built environment versus what is proposed. Again, you're talking about one unit per 16 acres on average in this mile now, and this would take the overall average down to one acre, and these homes, as you know, would be seven units per acre as built because of the reduction for cluster lots. That's point one. Point two, where I believe that you do have the authority, is that they have asked for this not as a straight subdivision for 10,000 square foot lots, but actually, half of that in the downward departure for cluster lots. There are certain criteria that they have to meet when they ask for this to be subdivided as cluster lots. They have to meet 15% common open space, and they have to put in recreational facilities that are on usable open space. And we don't believe that those two criteria have been met. The spaces that they reserve are largely taken up by floodway, floodplain. You have a huge TVA easement that crosses this property, which, as you know, is essentially unbuildable. They also are having to carve out for roads and stormwater detention. All of those things are part of what they've counted. So, we don't believe that they reach the 15% reservation to be eligible for cluster lots. And so, on that basis alone, I think that you have the authority to disapprove. And beyond that, all recreational facilities have to be usable. A lot of what you see where that walking trail is, is on steep slopes of 20% to 25%.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I think if the applicant would like to respond.
May I make one more point to you?
Very, very quickly.
Well, I want to point out that in terms of your discretion, you do have a variance procedure, and typically, that variance procedure deals with applicants asking for more, but your variance procedures don't articulate that. Your variance procedures specifically say that you can grant variances if it is appropriate, because it is oppressive to a certain area.
Okay.
And I would argue that in this case, a variance should be granted to accommodate the fact that you have an area that its built character is entirely rural, and this development would be so dramatically different than that, that it is appropriate for a departure under your variance criteria.
Okay. Thank you. So, we will give the applicant a moment to respond.
Thank you again, Adam Sager, Dale &amp; Associates, 516 Heather Place. Real quickly, to address a couple of things Mr. Holloman said about the cluster lot provisions, we are meeting all of the provisions within the cluster lot portion of the zoning ordinance, as staff has mentioned. There was a mention about floodplain. There is no floodplain on the property. As you heard earlier, there are slopes on this property. That means we're higher up in the hills. There is no floodplain on the property anywhere. There is a requirement for open space in the cluster lot provision. That is to be 15% of your property area. Currently, as you can see on the plans, we're showing 34%, so we are more than doubling the amount of open space that's required in the cluster lot provision. Cluster, or the open space is then further broken down into passive and active. Both of them count towards it. Yes, we are using a portion of this open space for buffers to surround the property. We're using it for stormwater treatment, to control all the stormwater runoff. We are having a large passive area to prevent slopes. We're trying to incorporate the natural resources by incorporating a natural walking-in trail through there for the community. And then, in the active places, we're providing more, out of the abundance of caution, providing more above and beyond active facilities than what is required in the zoning ordinance. So, I just wanted to make a clarification that we have gone to great lengths to make sure we meet every aspect of the cluster lot provision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, additional questions for staff or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the staff, what is their opinion about what we heard today? If that's okay with.
Opinion in regards to?
Yeah, can you be more specific? Yes. Well, there seems to be an argument about the discrepancy between the area plan and the nature of the area. I mean, the, what is legislative and what is actual. Then, the issue of the fact that because the open space is unusable, according to one side, given the topography, that that may not meet the legislation, so I wanted to have some clarity on that. If there is any language about usability on the open space regarding the cluster? I think, and then, there was some comment about variance.
Let me, okay, I'll start first.
Okay.
You asked about policy. And I went through it a bit more detail in the, in the presentation, but just as a reminder of the relationship between policy and the subdivision regulations. This table is directly from the subdivision regulations. Transsects, which is another, which is an aspect of our policies. So, as you know, that we're on a transect standard here in Davidson County. T1 to T6 are the transects. Transect 1, natural, 2, rural, 3, suburban. So, the subdivision regulations outline for you the way that they are applied to properties within those different transects. Now, within the transects, you have various policy areas. For instance, in T3 suburban, you have suburban neighborhood maintenance, suburban neighborhood evolving, suburban neighborhood center, et cetera. And so, there are policies that fit within those transects. So, the subdivision regulations outline for you how the subdivision regulations are applied to areas within those different policies, okay? This area is a T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy. So, it falls within that T3 transect, the suburban transect. And in that transect, for the subdivision regulations, the conventional suburban subdivision regulations are applied to that property, which is Chapter 3 of the subdivision regulations, the traditional suburban subdivision regulations. And so, that's really the limit of policy in this regard for subdivision regulations as they pertain to this property. So, that's that question about how it relates to each other. The second question that you asked was in regards to open space and the usability of that open space. And the cluster lot provisions specify that 15% of the property must be set aside for open space. This, the applicant is setting aside 22% or 22 acres of the property, 34% as open space. There are, there is a category of the open space called recreational facilities. So, for the subdivision, to meet the cluster lot provisions, they must have two recreational facilities within usable open space. It states that usable open space cannot be areas with 15% slope or greater. There's a couple of other areas that can't be considered. Now, they have exceeded the number of recreational facilities that are required. There is a playground area designated here within areas that are not within 15% slope. There is a walking, there is a gazebo sitting area, dog park, in this centralized green open space here, and a horseshoe, horseshoe, I don't know what you call that, court, located in this central green area here. And so, they're meeting the criteria regards to the number of recreational facilities. Now, they do have a facility located within this area that's steeper slopes. They're meeting the standard, so this is an additional recreational facility located within that area. Was there a third question? I'm sorry if I lost track.
I just wanted to clarify. So, the 15% don't have, doesn't have to be usable. It's just those two recreation areas.
Right. And the cluster lot is, the cluster lot provisions are specifically set aside, as I kind of talked about before, with the hillside development standards. about before, with the hillside development standards. The cluster lot provision is specifically encouraged for properties that have slopes of over 20%, so that that slope area can be set aside in open space and not disturbed, which is what this applicant is doing.
Okay. I think the third question was this comment about variance.
There are no variances required. They're meeting the subdivision regulations.
I think our legal counsel might be able to handle that.
I'll answer that. As was stated earlier, the subdivision regulations were adopted by this commission pursuant to state law. And the role of this commission, when a subdivision request comes before you, is to evaluate the criteria that is set for specifically in the subdivision regulations. And if you determine that the application or the concept plan meets the subdivision regulations as well as the zoning code, you don't have the authority to disapprove it. You can disapprove it if you state with specificity that it does not meet the zoning code or the subdivision regulations. With respect to the variance, there is a provision in the subdivision regulations that talks about a variance. It says, "The planning commission can grant a variance if an extraordinary hardship or practical difficulty exists or would result from strict compliance with the regulations." And in determining whether or not that extraordinary hardship exists, there are several factors that you would consider, two of which are if the variance request is based on, if the variance request is unique to the specific property, and that it is not applicable generally to other property, as well as that it's based on particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of this particular property. So you look at, again, is there an extreme difficulty? And if it's unique to this property versus all the surrounding property. And that's, again, that's for a variance request, if, you know, if there's an extraordinary hardship. Commissioner Bishop?
Yeah, one question. In the conditions, it was specified that the developer would need to designate any lots with a natural slope of 20% or greater as a critical lot and denote with an asterisk. And maybe I just can't see it on the plan, but how many of these lots are on a 20% slope or none of them on?
I can clarify that one. We asked them to remove all of the lots outside of slopes of greater than 20%.
So no?
Right. But we will get more detailed information in subsequent phases, particularly when we look at a grading plan. We'll have a deeper evaluation. And at that point, that's when we would look at those critical lots. However, if you look at the overall, Lisa, can you show that image of all the topography in the area generally? Generally speaking, I think we, I thought we had it back. Okay, so generally speaking, if you look at the upper northwest portion of the site, that's where most of the slopes are. There are no lots in there. That was the first set that we looked at. As you look at the rest of the property, though, once we get grading information, that's when we can have a little more detailed knowledge. But we would not permit any lots in the area in the northwest where you have contiguous open space areas.
Another question I had was, I don't know if this is a fair question, but the council lady felt that there could be a compromise. I think if I understand the regulations, the only way right now that we would not make a determination on this tonight is if the applicant volunteers to defer. And so I just wanted to ask the council lady, if possible, what kind of a compromise she thinks could be possible, because that might give the developer an opportunity to volunteer to defer.
So maybe before we go too far, because we don't at this point have a motion to defer?
I didn't want to move to defer.
Okay.
I just want to ask her if she can give us an idea of a compromise, just to put that in the conversation, and then we can talk about that briefly.
Okay.
I really do appreciate that question. In terms of a compromise, I've talked to several of the neighbors, and we were thinking about downsizing. Right now, it's 193, and I know they're approved for even more than that, but that's excessive. And it was almost as if, when I talked to them, and I said, "Well, can we just talk about a compromise?" And they said, "Yes, we can talk about that." And I'm not sure exactly how that looks, but the thing that was mind-boggling, it was almost like the engineers and the developers were not necessarily wanting to discuss a compromise, but I can't speak for them and I'm not sure. But I do know that a compromise is something that we would be willing to entertain.
Thank you.
So from what you just said, I'm guessing that a compromise would mean fewer lots, bigger lots and fewer lots, or at least the lots on Brick Church Lane would be bigger so that there would be some transition. Is that the kind of thing that you all were seeking?
You are correct. Yes.
Could you just show one more slide, and then I'll be done. There's an aerial view that shows that there is a dense development just to the west of this, I think. Yeah, I guess just to the, what street is that?
Night Drive.
Night Drive.
Night Drive located here.
Right. How long ago was that built?
The subdivision to the south, right there, was built out in the 80s, and this was built out in the early 2000s.
And the density of that is similar to what is being proposed?
I don't have the density of that.
Okay, those are my questions.
The questions are fine. We just can't have the audience participation. If you would like, but please, if you have additional questions, is there?
No, that was it.
No, that was it. All right. Commissioner Sims? No, I'm very curious.
This is really tough in terms of trying to understand, and some of us are still new, what the difference between the subdivision requirements. And going back just to the, and this is probably for you particularly, in trying to read the law and what really is our responsibility, it says that as a commission, we can, the law enables the community to require that necessary infrastructure be available prior to development occurring through a comprehensive or land use plan that will identify these. Is that what the next step would do?
Well, yes. When they submit the site plan, at that time, then all the departments would review it. It includes Public Works, it'd be Water Services, us, and we would look at it to make sure that there's adequate infrastructure, whether that's stormwater, water sewer, and the roads. And then those requirements are put onto the subdivision, and then they can either go ahead and build the infrastructure. That's the portion you're reading about, that's speaking to that. We can either require them to build out that infrastructure, or they can allow them to bond it, so that we can ensure that it will be built.
And the other question is if we were to say yes, is there any other option for the neighborhood to negotiate or to compromise? Is this the only, okay, this is the only step that we would have, so?
The planning commission, with respect to subdivisions, the planning commission is the final decision maker.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Well, you know, first, it does, you know, just, let me ask a question. The harmonious development that was brought up, harmonious, is that part of the policy, the harmonious development?
Again, as it relates to the development of land, as it relates to subdivisions, policy has a pretty limited role. The subdivision regulations outline for you how the regulations are applied to different policies. In this instance, T3 neighborhood evolving, the conventional suburban regulations are applied to this property. That's really the limit of policy application in regards to subdivision regulations.
That's one point. But to clarify, it's the infill where we have harmonious. We have the authority to evaluate whether or not it's harmonious. Is that correct?
Within neighborhood maintenance policies, there is a requirement for lot compatibility to be consistent. There is also some standards within rural subdivisions. Those apply to T2 neighborhood policies, and the compatibility applies to neighborhood maintenance policies, not neighborhood evolving policies.
Okay, so that's just, I think, an important clarification, because we do talk a lot about whether or not these are harmonious.
Yeah, that was kind of, because, you know, just when you look at it, in this area, it does seem like it's something that doesn't fit within what's planned for it. But it's, you know, just, so I was trying to really see if there's any part of the policy that we could, you know, point to. Because the problem is, I mean, I don't know, the problem is not the right word, probably, but the policy says, it meets the policy. I'm not sure why it wasn't included in the original. It does, but, well, I guess it's close to, you know, how it's situated. It's probably why it wasn't a national next. I mean, we heard that it was overlooked, which it could have been.
That's definitely.
But it seems like, you know, based on what it is, it seems like, you know, based on the policy, it's hard to just totally, like I said, and especially listening and people there, it doesn't seem like it fits. And that's where I was kind of going back to the harmonious development. But, you know, from a policy standpoint, I can't really argue it. And I was mounting it until I looked at all the traffic and parking recommendations, because they seem like a lot of the bullets are trying to, you know, address the community's concerns, because I was about to ask, is there plans for Brick Church to get, how are they going to improve Brick Church for it? Because, you know, this is something. But then when I looked, they're asking for a turn, I guess it's a turn lane that I was going to ask that to. The developer shall construct a separate northbound left turn lane on Brick Church Pike. Is that, I guess, just from the extent in front of the development? I'm assuming?
No, that would be where Brick Church Lane meets Brick Church Pike. As was pointed out, I think, during the public discussion, there's not a direct access onto 24 here. What they'll do is the residents will go up to Brick, if you're going to 24. You'll go to Brick Church Pike, you'll turn west, and then when you reach Brick Church Lane, and when you reach Brick Church Pike, you'll turn right, and that's where the turn lane would be put in.
Okay. Because it just said, "Shall construct a separate northbound left turn lane on Brick Church Pike." Okay. And then the appropriate mitigation for wheeler property traffic impact. So anyway, just like the, it feels too much for it, and I was trying to go back to what's happening on Brick Church Pike, but it does seem like there's a lot of conditions that are already spelled out there that they have to meet. And just based on the, you know, the policy in the T3 suburban, whether it's supposed to be that or not, it's hard to find things to, you know, to point to. From a feeling, it seemed like a less density would be better, but it's hard to, you know, it is less than what the policy allows. You know, it's like, well, maybe there should be the trees, you know. It is a lot, it's a very wooded area, but then, you know, they made more open. You know, so it's, I'm having a hard time coming up with things that would, could, that were against policy, I guess I could say. I can't find any right now. So, right now, I'm having a hard time disapproving it, because I can't come up with enough things, anything that's against the policy. So I'll be, I'll listen to my other commissioners to see, but right now, I'm having difficulty coming up with anything. So it seems like it meets policy.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackshear?
Well, one good thing about going this way is that all my questions have been asked. I really just wanted a clarification of our role as the planning commission as it relates to this item. And also, I was really interested about clarifying the ability to use this harmonious development concept, which you clarified. And another question I had was basically just the process. This is a concept plan, but then how does it move beyond that? And I think that was also adequately discussed for me. I honestly don't have anything else to say.
Commissioner Moore?
Pretty much likewise for me. My biggest question was about the variance procedures. And after hearing the role of, or our role as the planning commission, again, I feel I'm having a hard time finding things to not, or to go against the staff recommendation on this, but it's kind of where I stand.
Do we have someone from Public Works here?
We do.
Can we, you know, as I read through, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of improvements on Brick Church Pike, but I drove out Brick Church Lane today, and that's a very different road than Brick Church Pike. And so I'm wondering if the improvements or the conditions that are in here for Brick Church Lane, they don't feel sufficient to me based on that. It is a very narrow, windy road.
The width from the traffic study said it's about 20 feet wide. It doesn't have shoulders. It doesn't look like. However, once you get into construction plans, and if sidewalks are required, we would never put a curb and gutter up next to a 20-foot. So they'll have to submit roadway construction plans, and it will try, it will have to meet one of our roadway cross-sections. They have some standards, and it will be looked at. Now, we've also asked for a little bit extra right-of-way in case more subdivisions are tacked on to the stub streets. At that time, maybe a left-turn lane on, at the access points would be warranted. They're not with these, with the 193 lots. They even did, they based the traffic study on 240. So even the traffic study kind of overevaluated how much traffic was going to be there, because it's really only 193 lots.
Okay, but there's not even space to add a left-turn lane at this point. They would never have to?
Well, they would have to dedicate additional right-of-way and do that.
Okay.
And we've asked for that, even on their exit, their access road off of Brick Church, we've asked for additional right-of-way in case we ever need a left and a right turn lane exiting.
Okay.
It looks like they can get site distance. Once the engineering is done, they'll have to modify the road as necessary, or the access points, a little bit to get the site distance.
And that the site distance would include, because they're right, they're coming up a hill.
They'll have to do a site distance exhibit in plan and profile, so that'll get your vertical curve and your horizontal curves.
Okay. And does Brick Church Lane fall into any, where does it fall on our plan, our various plans? I mean, it's not a road that's targeted for improvement at some point?
I don't know. About the priority index, about when it would be upgraded?
Well, no, in what it is in terms of, is it in the major street? It is. It's designated a collector on the major collector street plan. Okay, okay. Okay. I mean, I do, I was somewhat surprised when I drove out there today to realize that is a, that is a rough, I mean, it's, I see why the neighbors are really worried about that road. that road. And while I agree with you that, from a policy perspective, and I think this might just be a question in general, I mean, we have, it definitely is consistent within the project, but it's inconsistent with the neighborhood. And when do we reconcile that? I mean, I guess that's what we did with the suburb, with the rural subdivision regs.
Right. So, let me go back to the policy map. The policies that were adopted in this area, and specifically in this area, actually had another year that the rest of the adoption of Nashville Next didn't have. There were those 11 areas set aside in, in White Creek that had additional conversation. This area, this property and the properties, and it's, it's a bit difficult to see, but this here, and then this here, so kind of making up this swath here, was all established as neighborhood evolving with the addition, with the initial adoption of Nashville Next in 2015. Some of the area to the north, sorry, went the wrong way. You can see here's the star. So all of that area that I just discussed, that's kind of in that swath, is that part that was neighborhood evolving with some conservation going through the middle. This is the district industrial. So these areas that were outlined were the areas that had further study, that then were ultimately the parts of the north here was designated as rural maintenance. So essentially, the policy was set with Nashville Next at that time, and the policy, the application of policy is intentional. The location of the policy is intentional and was done so during Nashville Next. This area is adjacent to the interstate, adjacent to area that has an industrial development.
Right.
And so this serves as a transition north to that rural policy area. In the rural policy area here, there are additional subdivision regulations, the rural subdivision regulations, that would govern the development of that property.
Right, okay. I mean, I, I don't think that it was overlooked. I think it's, this was a very intentional, I mean, I remember going through this whole process. I do not remember discussing this parcel specifically. You know, I don't want to say it's unfortunate that we didn't see this more closely at the time, but it kind of is what it is at this point, and it's pretty hard to not find a reason, you know, to say that this is inconsistent with our subdivision requirements. Any other questions?
Yeah, me.
Yeah, please.
Do we have a survey of the tree canopy? A site plan? I mean, there was some conversation on significant trees, like a cedar canopy that require preservation.
We don't have a tree survey. If when's necessary, it'd be looked at with the final.
Well, I think it's important because some of these lots may require cutting some of those significant trees. And I wonder if there is a opportunity to put a restriction on the request for preservation of trees that are significant, like maybe over a certain canopy or that may a certain species. Is that possible, Mr. Sloan?
I'm not aware of how you would put that kind of restriction on, on this subdivision application, no. I do think that it would be looked at when they file the, the site plan, and if we go in there and we find out that there's something that's required to be preserved, then, then we could do that. But without some sort of regulation already in place that gives us that authority, we can't do it through this subdivision application.
Because this is not the BCA.
No, that's not the BCA.
Okay, well, that worries me because we, we are losing the tree canopy, and it's very hard to grow a tree from scratch. It'd take years. And so I understand that all the conversation about how this is subdivision, we have to, I mean, the owner has some vested entitlements in the property, so I'm not, I don't disagree with that. I'm just concerned about the, the issue of the tree canopy.
I think it's safe to say we're all very sensitive to a wide range of concerns. It's, you know, it's just, what's before us is not really open to reflecting all of those concerns. It's a much more straightforward administrative process. So, we need a motion. I'm looking both directions. At everybody.
I'll do it. I move that we accept the staff's approval of this subdivision. Am I saying it correctly?
Recommendation for approval.
I'm sorry?
Staff's recommendation for approval.
Yep, staff's recommendations for approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Do we need a show of hands? I guess we all are. Okay, so we've got...
Can I abstain? Is that permitted?
Yeah.
I think that, you talk legal counsel, I think courts have said that you can't abstain in a situation like this, that you're on this body to make tough decisions.
And, and the legal recommendation is that it needs to be voted for yes.
Well, I will reiterate, I'll reiterate what, what Director Sloan said, that you should not abstain. I think, are you asking what planning's recommendation is? Oh, what my recommendation is?
No, I mean, I'm just having a hard time not knowing what the tree canopy is to support this.
Okay.
So that, that's why I'm having a hard time.
Well, again, I think your role as a commissioner is to look at the subdivision regulations and what the subdivision regulations require. And if you find that it meets the subdivision regulations, I think you need to, I don't think you have the authority to disapprove it. If you find that it does not meet the subdivision regulations, then you need to state with specificity that it does not, how it does not meet the subdivision regulations. Otherwise, I think it would likely be deemed arbitrary.
But as one commissioner, who...
Well, I could, I would say this. Had you been presented with proof that there was a, some sort of preservation requirement of the tree canopy that existed there, and that was put into the record, and you could rely on that, then you, you might be able to, you could do that. But you haven't been presented.
Well, only a comment of one of the people that testified about this cedar canopy or something. But yeah, it wasn't an official tree forestry expert making that comment.
Thank you.
So, I, I'm stuck, I guess. I have to vote yes. Well, I'm, I'm very sad, and I'm sure we, most of us are, but this reminds me, a struggle I had with the air board in the state of Tennessee, when I wanted them to support something, and they were reluctant because of politics. I don't want to do that. I just want to do what we are required by statute, and if it's what we're required, then I'm going to do it.
Okay. So the item is closed, and I, we certainly appreciate everyone coming down here tonight. No, this is not a difficult decision for us, or certainly for the community. Moving on to item eight.
Can we take a minute?
Sure, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Let's see, we are on to item number eight. I need my agenda. What's the item between? We also have item 17 coming still, right? They're here, okay. Okay, so we will move on to item number eight.
The next item on this evening's agenda is item eight. This is a request to change from...
Sir, you can come up after he does his presentation.
This is a request to, to change zoning from IWD to RM28. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. The property is located at 828 Cherokee Avenue, approximately 1,300 feet east of Jones Avenue, and the property contains 0.55 acres. The site is currently zoned IWD Industrial Warehousing and Distribution, which is intended for a wide range of warehousing, wholesaling, and bulk distribution uses. The policy for the site is T4 Urban Mixed-Use Neighborhood, which is intended to preserve, enhance, and create urban mixed-use neighborhoods with a development pattern that contains a variety of housing along with mixed-use, commercial, institutional, and even light industrial development. These areas are served by high levels of connectivity, complete street networks, sidewalks, bikeways, and existing or planned mass transit. This map illustrates the surrounding network of arterial and collector streets, along with the grid pattern of surrounding local streets. Ellington Parkway and Gallison Pike are located to the east of the, east of the site. Dickerson Pike and Interstate 65 are located to the west of the site. The closest on-ramp to Ellington Parkway is located within three-quarters of a mile to the northeast. And as you are familiar, this is the image which shows the growth and preservation map, which is, was adopted by the planning commission as part of the Nashville Next process. The growth and preservation map identifies areas which are most appropriate for growth. This map indicates the location of the site relative to the transition areas, as well as Tier One and Tier Two centers. The policy intends to create moderate-to-high-density residential, commercial, office, and light industrial uses. Resoning this parcel to RM28 will provide an opportunity for this site to achieve these goals. The current industrial uses exhibit a greater intensity than is identified as appropriate for the policy. The policy cites light industrial, non-nuance-type craft and other cottage industrial uses as appropriate, as an appropriate intensity within the policy. The RM28 zoning district contains design standards for vehicular parking, building form and location, as well as locational requirements for the primary entrance. These standards, as required by the alternative zoning district of RM28, will foster a more pedestrian-friendly environment by implementing appropriate form for structures. Jones Avenue has existing MTA service, and an MTA stop is located at the intersection of Jones Avenue and Cherokee Avenue. The nearest on-ramp to Ellington Parkway, again, is three-quarters of a mile to the northeast. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve the conditions as the request is consistent with the T4 mixed-use neighborhood policy.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and the applicant may now come forward. You will have 10 minutes, and please state your name and address.
My name is, first of all, good evening. Appreciate you being here and listening. My name is Roland Cannon. I live at 828 Cherokee Avenue. And the reason for the application for rezoning, there's a lot of building going on on the streets that I live on, and a lot of the property owners are considering selling for development. The property next to me has already been sold for development, and I was just, it'd be a good time for me to get out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody here wanting to speak in support of, of this project?
First of all, I want to say thanks to all of you for your service to our community. My name is Barbara Rains, and I live across the street from Mr. Roland. And I do support this because, as he stated, there's just a lot of changes going on in the area. And we just feel that because of that, and because there is a need for housing in this area, that, that we do support that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in support? Anybody speaking in opposition? Good evening.
Good evening, once again. My name is Gordon Stacy Harmon. I reside at 1826 Joyce Circle. Thank you again for letting me speak tonight. You folks have a very difficult mandate to balance the desires to increase housing stock while considering the feelings and desires of citizens who already live in these areas. I'm not against development. We need more housing stock, but taking such an extreme swing of density stands to erode the existing neighborhood in favor of meeting a policy that many of my neighbors do not understand, nor do they really approve. To recap just what we were discussing earlier with item number three, there are six projects that I'm aware of, three on the, the agenda for tonight, as well as three others that have met some form of approval and are moving forward, that are going to add a total of 549 residences. That's if this particular request for rezoning, they put, say, 10 residences on this particular half-acre. 549 residences in less than a third of a mile. Cherokee dead ends. It does not go out any further than just a few houses down, which item number 21 on your agenda is another lot about this size that's going to be, request to be rezoned, RM20. Okay? Cherokee empties onto Jones. Jones is going to have not only traffic from Cherokee, both commercial trucks as well as residential, but it will also have traffic from the East Trinity SP, which is right up the street. It's going to have traffic from the Cherokee Master Plan, which is on the other side of Ellington, that has to come across, turn up Jones, and then go to Trinity to get out. That's a lot of extra traffic, as we've mentioned beforehand in other discussions tonight. The infrastructure really cannot support that. While this is a small project, it's just one small piece of everything that's going on in our neighborhood, and density of this type just is not good for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again. Good evening again. My name is Ashanti Davis. I live at 321 Edwin Street, which is about half a mile from this proposed property. Like, you guys have had a hard night, really, and you guys have to balance a lot, and I understand that you have to balance competing interests. And a lot of the arguments that I've made in front of you, I have gave, I've gathered them from your wisdom when I listened to you all talk. Like, my aggregate argument came directly from Commissioner Tibbs. Like, I'm not smart enough to think about that on my own. And, you know, the last time I was here before you for an upzoning on Cherokee that didn't have a specific plan to increase to 20 units, Vice Chair Fairfar, I don't care, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it, you mentioned to my councilmen, like, this type of upzoning without a plan leads to gentrification. And that's also a real concern. And so I understand where I live. I understand that development's going to happen. That neighborhood's already changed a bunch since I've been living there, and I expect it to continue, and I'm okay with that. It's just that Cherokee is a dead end. It doesn't, it only can come out in, it can only go in and out one way. And so then you're putting more pressure on these roads like Lishy, like Jones, like Trinity, like Douglas, and these roads have already, they're sort of already at capacity, and most of them don't even have a sidewalk network. I don't have a sidewalk on Edwin. There's not a sidewalk on Edith. There's not a sidewalk on Marshall. There's not a sidewalk on Cherokee. There's not a sidewalk anywhere within this vicinity. And so I understand that the developer, whenever it gets developed, has to build a piece of a sidewalk, but these roads are super narrow, and you guys have had a long night, so I'm not even going to waste the rest of your time. I'm just going to ask that instead of RM20, maybe we can do a higher density, but maybe something a little less. Thank you all. Thank you. Anybody else speaking in opposition? With the applicant, you have two minutes for rebuttal if you would like to come up and use those. If not... You okay? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and declare the public hearing closed, and Commissioner Tibbs...
My son uses my words against me, too, actually. I, you know, I definitely feel like that, especially being consistent with the plan, that changing it from IWD is appropriate. The RM20 may be too dense for this area, but I could definitely see it changing to more, you know, definitely residential and more density. And this would get up to 11 units, which would obviously be too much for that area. Or is it 20? Yeah, 20, 11, yeah, 11. But, I don't know, I guess I'd be, I would, I can't, I would definitely entertain if it, if it would be less density, maybe there was a way we could go with less, but I, I definitely support changing it from IWD. So I'll leave it at that for now. I'll leave it at that for now.
Commissioner Sims?
I actually like this plan, so it's my only comment.
I just, sorry, I just had a question. So, if, like, he just said, we thought that RM20 was too dense, and there was a better zone that had fewer dwellings that could be on there, how would we handle that? Would we just disapprove this, and then they would have to reapply? Or do we, how does that work?
Well, that's the prerogative of the council member, to determine what the right zoning is, not the commission. The commission can give a recommendation. And then, the council can, and if you recommend disapproval, then the council has to have a supermajority to pass the zoning over that disapproval. And the council members may decide that a disapproval from the commission is enough for them not to vote for it, and it won't get it, the requisite votes of 27, and then the council member may come back with something else. But those are really your options.
So, this lot over on the right-hand side, it's already been zoned RM28? This lot to the...
Can we see the zoning? Do you have a zoning map? All right, thank you.
The one that's listed RM28 in black?
Yeah.
That's already been zoned that?
Yeah.
And, okay, one last thing. So, if we made a recommendation, I'm not making a motion, I'm just trying to understand our role exactly. If we made a recommendation for a different zone, not RM28, we would have to decide that now? That seems really difficult. We would just say disapprove?
Yeah, you're just disapproving, but I think, now that it's come up, you can see, I don't know why the screens keep blacking out and coming back on, but you can see here the bottom right towards Ellington Parkway, where RM20 is, RM28, and then top left, you can see several other lots there that have already been rezoned, RM28, and then MUNA towards the end. And then you see the lot that is being showed, and then the rest of it is IWD. Correct?
Any other questions? You good? Councilman Bedney?
No comment.
No comment. All right. Commissioner Blackshear?
I'm probably leaning more in favor of approval of this plan. I did have a question. I mean, so there's been discussion about different zones that'd be appropriate, that are different from IWD. Was there a conversation with the applicant about choosing RM28, or how did that, how did that zone as a choice come about, you know?
That was just... That was the zoning that was just originally applied for, but yeah, yes.
No further comments? Commissioner Moore?
I definitely agree with the zone change to residential, but I am interested to, I guess, see about exploring a smaller... Sorry, I'm struggling for words. A smaller amount of units on the property, I guess, so, yeah, I don't know what the venue, I don't know what the next, sorry.
Okay. Well, I was just bothering Director Sloan about this, but I was looking ahead to item 21 and noticing that we're looking across the street in that one, and also doing RM28. I think we've seen this street before with an entire, possibly the entire, street going to RM28, and I think we maybe didn't approve that.
No, we haven't.
We haven't seen this street before? Okay.
No, million others, but not this one.
Okay. But I'm just wondering if it's better to look at something consistent for this whole street versus two lots? And I know it may be out of order to ask a question about a future case, but it does raise some questions.
When the first rezoning along this street came in on the eastern, the south-eastern part of Cherokee, it was staff's recommendation that that was premature and that the whole street should be rezoned. And the intent of the policy being mixed-use was that to remove an industrial zoning from a residential area. Right now, it's zoned IWD, and the policy's intent is to transition that over so that you have uses that are not as impacted to a residential neighborhood around there. And so, when the first one came in, we thought that that was, that it shouldn't be done sort of one piece at a time, and we recommended, I think, disapproval and that the whole street or large portions of the street should be rezoned all at once. And the commission disagreed with that and said that we can't force people to rezone their properties, and that it was...
I think what Bob's trying to say is that we had that brilliant idea before, and you disagreed with us.
The commission at the time didn't want to force people into a rezoning of their property if they weren't ready, because there are still some industrial uses being used, and that would make, that would make them non-conforming, and they may still intend to use those properties for industrial. So, what we've been doing over the last several years since then is looking at them one at a time.
I hope I wasn't, but I bet I was part of the ones making that decision, because now it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I'd rather see something that was consistent. It looks very strange to me. I mean, I see why it makes sense on that, on that one that's already got a lot of multifamily on it, but to have these two on opposite sides of the street...
Well, I think that was put there after it was rezoned.
Okay.
And I'll, you know, jump in just to that conversation. That was my thing. Once we approved RM20, then there would be, they could be, that whole area could just start doing it. And I know it's a case-by-case thing, as we'd have to look at it case-by-case, but, you know, what would, so that was kind of why I wish we could dial it back. I understand there's how we'd have to do it since the council person's here. We can't do it, but, so anyway, that was my problem, too. It's like we're getting, we couldn't stop it once it got going.
Well, also, once we get, I mean, it's one thing to have one or two lots zoned for RM28, but if that, and, I mean, I don't think that would be what we would suggest rezoning that entire street for. So, I do also worry about opening the door up to, I'd rather see something, I agree on the switch to residential, but I'd rather see something that, once we open that door up, if individual property owners want to switch, that we end up with something consistent that we want to see on that street. Because, I mean, in those two lots alone, it wouldn't happen, but you've got 20 units that could go in. And talk about changing the nature, if all of those units transitioned to RM28, we'd have a whole giant multifamily complex up there, which may or may not be the desire of the neighborhood. So...
I think you're going to find it difficult as you continue to address these, and let's just assume for a moment that you continue to approve them, you set that pattern up to then back away from it when other applicants come that are similarly situated. You're going to have a very difficult time not approving those as well. But I also want to point out that one of the reasons you may not see the councilmen coming in trying to rezon the area in a more thoughtful way, where it's all one type of zoning district to allow maybe some of these lots to be consolidated and a better design for the development to go in place, but it's because some of these people probably don't want to let go of IWD. They may be using these structures and these properties in a way that if you allowed, if you changed it to RM28 or something else, that they would lose the way that they're using their properties. Having driven down this road, that would not surprise me in the least. So, he may have pushback from the community about trying to rezon it comprehensively.
Wouldn't have to disband their business or whatever. It's just like if they changed over, right?
Well, that's true. If you have a legally non-conforming use and you rezon it, you could continue that use, but you can't expand it beyond that property. And so, I know that we recently had a case where one of the council members, in a moment of zeal, rezoned some properties against someone's wishes and actually upzoned their property, but they didn't want it upzoned, and now that council member's trying to undo that. And relatively close to this property, not to a point in any district in particular, but really close to this property.
So, but I guess that's a question for staff, is, I mean, we could accomplish the desired outcome of getting residential density there, but does it have to be RM28? Can it be something slightly less intense?
That's going to be up to the councilmen to submit...
I know, but you guys can give them guidance.
And I don't think the RM28, Patrick can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the RM28 is at the maximum end of what that, what that policy would allow.
That's correct. It's not an actual...
Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
I don't think that that site would allow you to do 11 units. I mean, that's just...
It won't.
No, there's no way you can get 11 units in there.
You can't.
Yeah, so I think you commission need to know that although it says 11, with all the setbacks and...
But once you start consolidating, once you start consolidating and you have that, then you're starting to get, which might be fine, but I think that's a pretty big change in the neighborhood.
Maybe with this conversation, we can just talk to the council person as he's maybe thoughtful on how these change, how these come about as they continue from now on, as opposed to just, you know, maybe we can think of a thoughtful approach, but I think at this point, we probably, since they're not here, and we probably, and we don't, at least I don't disagree with the change of residential, so I'm going to change and say I, you know, I agree with staff recommendations, approve of conditions.
All right. Well, would you like to make a proper motion?
That's it.
Do we? Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to actually oppose after my questions. Okay. So, we can't just skip ahead and do RM21?
So, just for the record, the chair opposed.
Okay. Item 17? 18? 17?
17.
This is a request to permit 128 multifamily residential units, and the request is to revise the preliminary plan for a planned unit development overlay district on property located at Bell Road. The parcel contains 14.93 acres. This request seeks to modify the layout of the multifamily structures within Phase II to permit 128 multifamily units. The unit count for this phase has not increased beyond what was previously approved. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Current zoning of the site is RM9, MUL, and planned unit development overlay. RM9 is intended for single-family, duplex, and multifamily dwellings at a density of nine units per acre. Mixed-use limited MULs intended for moderate-intensity mixture of residential, retail, restaurant, and office uses. And planned unit development is an alternative zoning process that allows for the development of land in a well-planned and coordinated manner, providing opportunities for more efficient utilization of land. The PUD was approved for 452 multifamily dwelling units in 2011. Metro Council approved the planned unit development, originally named Carrillan PUD, in 2005 to permit 165,200 square feet of retail and office space, along with 170 multifamily dwelling units. In 2011, the PUD was amended to permit 452 multifamily dwelling units. The PUD was renamed to Heron Point when the amendment was approved. To date, all 324 units approved for Phase I have been constructed or permitted for construction. This is the site plan for Phase II. This revision proposes one less multifamily structure in Phase II than shown on the previously approved preliminary plan, which originally had six structures. A total of five structures are proposed, which contain all of the 128 multifamily units. Access is provided by connection to an internal private street, which is shown on the left-hand portion of your screen. An emergency access point is being provided. There will be a gate that secures the emergency access point. Parking is provided in the form of surface, a surface lot with a total of 270 spaces, which exceeds the requirement of the Metro Code by two parking spaces. All of the proposed structures will front onto internal private drives. The site plan indicates a five-foot-wide sidewalk will be provided along the internal drives to create an internal pedestrian pathway throughout the site. A connection to the existing sidewalks in Phase I is being made along the entrance drive towards the front of the site and in between building 15 and 17. The site plan indicates a 20-foot-wide B landscape buffer will be provided along the eastern property line, and a 20-foot-wide C-level landscape buffer will be provided along the northern property line. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and open up the public hearing of the applicant. You'll have 10 minutes, and start with your name and address.
Thank you. My name's Adam Sager with Dale &amp; Associates, 516 Heather Place. This project, as staff mentioned, was previously approved. We are talking about only Phase II of an overall PUD, and this phase has only 128 units in it. The reason we're back here before you is not so much really to change the PUD or to change the intent of it in any way, shape, or form. What happens in these PUDs is on the front end, when they're approved, we have so much data to design and layout and do things. And then, since that time, a survey has been performed. We have learned that the exact location of these wetlands in the bottom, so we know exactly where those are. And so, this is more to just shift the buildings around and put them in an area that is going to be more conducive to preserve the wetlands, to make sure we stay off of our neighbors to the north more so. And we have reduced a building by doing that, what we have done to keep the same amount of units, again, it's the exact same amount of units that was approved previously. We've reduced a building, and then we've used the slopes that are already there to do a kind of a step-down in the building. So, you have on one hand side, it's going to look like a three-story building, and then towards the internal portion of the development, it'll look like a four-story building. And the roof line shouldn't change at all from where the neighbors see because we're moving it further down the slope. So, that's really one of the main changes, or the two main changes, is to adjust the layout to accommodate the new survey and to reduce a building and adjust those heights and make sure that that's all reflected in the PUD. One thing that I did learn tonight in talking with some of the neighbors who will probably be coming up, in the upper-right corner, and this may be a question for staff, I'm not sure, there was a dumpster we put on there, and that was a direct kind of reaction from Public Works comments about dumpsters, and I've learned tonight that the existing Phase I already has a compactor that serves as a development. I just didn't want to paint my client in a corner. Maybe that's not a big deal, but if that dumpster's shown on this plane, is that going to be the exact location where it has to go later, or can that be shifted around during a final site plan? I know sometimes those things are unknown later on. So, that's something that came up tonight, that we would prefer not to have that dumpster in the corner because the neighbors don't want it back there, and we already have sufficient trash pickup on the other part. So, that's the one item I just would like to get clarification on. Other than that, really appreciate your time and consideration, and I'll reserve two minutes to help answer any other questions from neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, do we have anyone here speaking in support of this project? Anyone speaking in opposition? Please come forward. You will have two minutes, and if you can state your name and address, please.
My name is Cynthia Teak. I live at 2172 Branch Oak Trail. That is in the Woodland Point subdivision. I'm here representing the Woodland Point subdivision from the board level. We have a couple of concerns based on things that happened during the original construction of Phase I in Heron Point. We have some issues that are unique to Piercey Priest in that we have a number of sinkholes around the area that act like amplifiers when blasting takes place. We had a very difficult time, ended up resulting in, at one point, 15 first responders tied up for 45 minutes trying to determine whether or not a blast... up for 45 minutes trying to determine whether or not a blast that went off that pushed a cloud down into Woodland Point was a fire or not. So to avoid that happening in the rest of that particular project, we requested that the blasting B levels be reduced, the amount of charges that they were using. That took care of the program, and we've talked to the builder about that. He's quite amenable to doing whatever needs to be done to keep that from happening again. Other issues that we have is the high density that is coming into the Bell Road area needs to be addressed for the very simple reason that, that corridor is one lane both ways. Most of the corridor, and it ties up traffic. We've got a 50 mile an hour speed limit along that section of road, and we'd like to approach them to get it reduced to 40 miles an hour from Couchville Pike down to Woodland Point Drive. Our accident rate has increased, tripled in the last two years. I pulled the statistics from Metro PD, and it, and that's, those are only the reported accident. It doesn't count all the fender benders. We're also asking for a 30-foot buffer zone between Woodland Point and Heron Point because there's a huge drop-off right, right at the property line that varies anywhere from 30 feet to maybe 10 feet, depending on where you're at on the property line. The problem that we have is that the Vila's section of Woodland Point.
We're going to give you the, a full five minutes because you are representing the association.
Thank you. The, the, the Vila's sit overlooking the whole Heron Point area. So we had a conversation with the builder, and they're going to try to work with us to increase that buffer zone because we were under the impression it was going to be 30 feet, which is what we had agreed to in the, when the original PUD was set up. Something happened between the meeting that we had at the council and when the final was filed, and we didn't catch it, and it was filed with a 20-foot buffer zone. So we're trying to not have our residents looking, you know, right out at rooftops if possible. The other thing is, we are in complete favor of removing that dumpster from the plan. First of all, they do have a trash compactor, and they can actually arrange to have additional pickups if they need to. But more importantly, the noise levels that occur around those dumpsters are not conducive to sleep, and the Vila's sit very, very close to that. The sinkholes cause more amplification of noise out in that area. So we'd like to see that thing go away. The other thing is, we'd ask that the outside parking lot at the northeast corner be moved back as far as possible to give more of a buffer zone between the parking lot and Doe Ridge. One thing that the planning commission needs to take into mind when they're doing any kind of approval on projects along the Bell Road corridor between Smith Springs Road and Elm Hill Pike, is we only have three corridors in that area to evacuate people during a fire emergency or a gas line emergency or whatever. We're getting really tight on space in there. We're getting more height density. So that's something that I'm requesting that you take into consideration on future development. Thank you for your time. You have a difficult job.
Thank you very much. Anybody else speaking in opposition? If not, then the applicant, would you like to use your two minutes?
Sure, I won't take up much more time. Just to address a couple of quick comments, we, we could build what's approved right now. My client has chosen to pull some of those buildings away, so hopefully we're helping to accommodate. We're going to continue to work with the neighbors to help work with that. I think it's only good to work with your neighbors. And the parking lot in the northeast corner that she mentioned, certainly when we get to final site plan, we can look at pulling those off the property lines as much as possible. The one thing that was mentioned was the landscape buffer. We are amenable to providing whatever the original PUD provided, if that was the 30-foot C buffer, landscape buffer, that's fine by us. And I think the other thing she mentioned was density. My client says they did already widen the road, Bell Road, in front of Phase One, so we did road improvements already to Bell Road. I think that addresses most of the comments. Oh, sinkholes was the other one. Of course, with any development, sinkholes pop up, we have to address them. We're going to avoid them at all possible. And I think during the survey, there was a closed contour that popped up in the far corner, and we're, we're staying off of that as of now. So if anything pops up, we will have to deal with that during final site plan. So I think that's it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will declare the public hearing closed, and let's see, Councilman Bednay, can we start with you? No comment. Okay. Commissioner Michelle?
I'm in favor of this. I would vote to approve.
Okay. Commissioner Sims?
I actually think this is a nice subdivision that you've done in the first phase, and this is complementary to the second phase, so I approve.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I would support staff recommendation.
Commissioner Blackshear?
I would also support staff recommendation. I wonder if the accommodations that the applicant was providing to the neighbors, whether that would be something we would have put in the conditions? Okay, so we would just need to make sure that we got all of those conditions.
To answer the question about the dumpster, I think we would be able to approve a relocated dumpster at final, as long as Public Works is okay with that. And we would, staff would not want it to be in a more impacted location closer to the adjacent neighbors, but we would look at that and make sure that whatever new location it ends up in is farther away from any existing residents, and Public Works is okay with it. And I think if you had the condition that they meet the original landscape plan, I think that is something you can add today, then they will have to meet that.
That would be the 30-foot buffer?
At the, the 30-foot buffer and, at the final.
And they wanted the parking lot moved a little bit over.
Yeah, I think.
Is that something that you?
Yeah, I think if you can add those as conditions for the final, then that's what we will review when the final comes in.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Moore?
I'm also in support, so would you like me to go ahead and make the motion?
You are welcome to make a motion, and, and we want to add the conditions.
So I move to support the staff, the staff's recommendation with the addition of the, the 30-foot buffer and the parking lot and the dumpster. Did I cover everything? Dumpster relocation. Possible dumpster relocation.
Possible relocation of the dumpster and possible relocation of the parking area.
Okay, I'll try to get that.
With requirement for the buffer, I think would be.
Okay, so possible relocation of the parking lot and possible relocation of the dumpster and inclusion of the 30-foot landscape buffer.
Yes, perfect. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carries. And we are on our final item, item 21. All right, the last item on this evening's agenda is item 21, which is a request to rezone approximately 0.48 acres on Cherokee Avenue from IWD to RM 20A. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. This site is located on the other side of the street from the case you just heard on Cherokee Avenue, closer to Ellington Parkway. The parcel is vacant. As a reminder, IWD zoning is intended for a wide range of wholesaling and bulk distribution uses, and RM 20A is intended for single-family duplex and multifamily dwellings at a density of 20 units per acre, and is designed to create walkable neighborhoods through appropriate building placement and bulk standards. The proposed zone change is consistent with the T4 mixed-use policy, which is intended to enhance urban neighborhoods by providing a diversity of housing in mixed-use areas. Cherokee Avenue, as you've heard previously, contains a mixture of uses and could support additional residential units based on the surrounding development pattern. The site is located in an area of T4 mixed-use policy that is adjacent to evolving suburban, I'm sorry, urban neighborhood evolving policy to the north and south. So multifamily development at this site will provide additional housing opportu, opportunities in proximity to those non-residential land uses. Nashville Next, you've seen this, identifies a site as a transition or infill area where higher-density housing is appropriate along and around corridors and centers to provide harmonious connections to those neighborhoods. The site, again, is located south of East Trinity Lane, which is identified by the growth and preservation map as a high-capacity corridor that transitions to a Tier Two center near Ellington Parkway. And really briefly, zooming out, you can see the site, its proximity to the centers, and then the surrounding corridors and, and downtown, which is about four miles away. The current IWD zoning is not supported by or consistent with the T4 mixed-use policy as it could permit future development that is not compatible with the area. The requested rezoning from IWD to RM 20A creates potential for redevelopment that is consistent with policy. This policy was purposely applied to this area with the adoption of Nashville Next to encourage development that is compatible with the surrounding area. Rezoning to a non-industrial zoning district is, encourages less intense land uses in an area which is envisioned to become primarily mixed-use, which is consistent with policy and is consistent with the surrounding context. The RM 20A zoning districts supports moderate-intensity residential development that could, that contributes to the mixed-use pattern along the block, and it includes standards for development, including the location of building and its associated parking, glazing, and foundation requirements as well. So rezoning to an alternative zoning district, again, will ensure that future development is consistent with the mixed-use neighborhood policy and with the context. And for these reasons, staff recommends approval with conditions. Thank you very much. We will go ahead and open the public hearing as the applicant here. Good evening. Thanks for waiting it out with us.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. My name is Nathan Agnew. We are a residential building company, and it is our intention to do town, townhouse size, or townhouse homes on this property. We do believe that it fits very similar developments that are already in the area, and we do also believe it fits within the policy and have support from the councilman at this point, so.
Okay, thank you. We didn't get your address, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's 854 Cherokee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here speaking in favor? Anybody speaking in, in opposition? Come forward.
Good evening, once again. My name, to, to refresh your memories, Gordon Stacy Harmon. I live at 1826 Joy Circle. In respect of your time in the late hour, I'm going to make this as brief as I possibly can. Density, density, density. You've already approved a property earlier just down the street that, that to be rezoned as RM 20. I'm not opposed to this being a residential area. I just would prefer it to be more in line with the, the general zoning in the neighborhood of RM 5 or RM 6 to minimize the number of lots and the amount of traffic that this particular lot would, would then add into our neighborhood. So that's all I have to say for this one. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Good evening again.
Good evening again. My name is Ashanti Davis. I live at 321 Edwin Street. Again, you guys have already heard my comments. I'm not going to restate them. I just reiterate what I said the last time, just due to the late hour and how long y'all, how long y'all have been here. So thanks for listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a little correction we need to make in regards to the previous Cherokee case, when we were showing you how much had already gone to RM 20. Between the time that case was originally filed and the slides were created, and the time that this case was filed, the, these other properties had gone to RM 20A as well. And so, this depicts the direction that this area is moving in.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I, we did not give the applicant their two minutes for rebuttal. Would you like to come? Do you have anything further? Okay, we will declare the public hearing closed, and I'll start with you, Commissioner Blackshear.
Well, I feel like we already went through this before, so I will save everybody time and to say I am in favor of approval of staff's recommendation for the reasons previously stated on item number eight.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Likewise, I'm also in support.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I'm in support, but I really would ask staff to speak with the councilperson more about this street. I encourage them to, but I'm in support of this.
I have the opportunity to speak with this council member most days.
Commissioner Sims?
For a month.
No comment.
Commissioner Michelle?
The, I'm in support also, but it does seem like there should be a more comprehensive plan for this block. So I don't know how we recommend that officially, but it sounds like we're all recommending it, so there you have it.
Thank you. Councilman Bednay? No comment? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Any other second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That wraps up. So we're on other business, historic zoning. Do you have any update for us?
We are just excited that the mayor has, for the metro, the grant for, what's it called, the rehabilitation of historic commercial buildings. And so, we wanted to announce that. We're real excited about it. So anyone who's interested, please get on the website, National Office of Economic Community Development, and solicit your proposal.
Thank you very much. Our parks person is out. We do not have an executive committee report. Legislative update. Anything from you, council, councilman?
Everything is good.
Everything is good? Director Sloan, do you have anything else for us?
No.
You want to talk about RM 20 some more?
No, I don't want to talk about RM 20 or. Yeah.
No.
I have nothing else.
Well, then we are adjourned.